Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order, with an emphasis on the word "order." It's a very crowded room tonight. I indulge your cooperation in allowing counsel to conduct the business at hand. It's a long meeting. We want to make sure that we hear everyone that has come to speak and/or to listen, as well as give respect to those who are tuning in from outside. So, please, exhibit your patience and your cooperation in allowing us to give everyone a fair shake at being heard and for counsel's ability to conduct business. I would greatly appreciate that. So, we call the meeting to order, and Councilman Blaylock, would you please lead us in an invocation and a pledge of allegiance?
Heavenly Father, as we come together tonight, grant us the wisdom, the patience, and the respect to carry on the business of our town. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic or which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmen. And again, good evening, everyone. So, we'll start tonight with public hearings and action. Matt, before I pass it to you, I'm going to ask Mr. Eads if he would please just give us a mini lesson in the procedures of a quasi-judicial hearing for everyone's benefit, including my own.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor and counsel. As you indicated, what I'm about to say is applicable to both special use permit hearing 1 and 2 on the agenda. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, which means that the Board is limited in its discretion to cast its vote tonight solely on the competent material and substantial evidence produced during the hearing. If anyone received any emails, if anyone has read about this on social media, and we'll get to some specific questions in a moment, you cannot consider that. You can only consider what we hear in this room tonight. Both applicants are entitled to a fair and impartial decision-making body, which means you, voting tonight, have to have an open mind and allow your vote again to be based solely on the competent evidence. I need to ask the Board, or, excuse me, the counsel has a whole few questions along those same lines. So, let me first ask, with respect to the first SUP application submitted by Demerus Company Landscape Architects P L C, and I believe they are going to be represented tonight by Attorney Grady Richardson out of New Hanover County. Has anyone had any ex parte, and by ex parte, I mean discussions, with the applicant about this application with respect to the substance of the application?
No.
Madam Clerk, if you'll just let the minutes reflect, that was all the negative, and that'll be the same for these next few. Does anyone on the counsel have a financial interest in the subject matter of this application? Does anyone on the counsel have a close, familiar-type or social-type relationship with anyone associated with the applicant?
No.
Does anyone on the counsel have a business or other associational, say that four times now, relationship with anyone associated with the applicant?
No.
Okay. Can any of you think of any reason, whether I've asked you the question or not, why you cannot have a fixed opinion tonight and base your vote solely on the competent evidence adduced during the hearing? Okay. Again, quasi-judicial means it's going to be conducted somewhat like a court hearing. We will follow the North Carolina rules of evidence, perhaps not as stringent as we would in a courtroom, but the goal is to ensure the applicant, as well as all those who testify, that their substantive and procedural due process rights are met, meaning a fundamental sense of fairness. All those who wish to provide testimony must first be sworn in. They will then be subject to cross-examination, as well as to questions from the Board. We will proceed by hearing first from staff through Mr. Kirkland. He will introduce the item. He will be subject to cross-examination and to questions from the Board. We will then hear from the applicant, again, who is represented by counsel, and I'll defer to Mr. Richardson on how he presents his case. Whoever testifies on behalf of the applicant will be subject to cross-examination and to questions from the Board. We will then hear from all those who have signed up, who have standing. This meeting is open to the public. Not everyone, legally speaking, has standing to talk about any particular issue. The courts look at things like the proximity of property you own to the proximity of the subject site, things of that nature. I generally err on the side of allowing everyone to speak, and we can discuss it on a witness-by-witness basis, but each one of those witnesses are going to be subject to cross-examination and to questions from the Board. Since the applicant does have the burden of proof, by inducing competent, relevant, and substantial evidence that the criteria required to issue a special use permit, and that criteria can be found on pages 4 and 5 of the agenda packet, we will give the applicant an opportunity to do a summation of what the applicant feels like the evidence showed once we hear from everybody else. So, unless there's, well, let me, there's a lot of people here. There's a public comments section on our agenda. That is different than providing testimony in the public hearing. So, if you have any questions about that as we go forward, I'm sure if you just, Madam Mayor will entertain the question, and the town clerk and I will do our best to address any questions you may have. But if you are here to testify concerning the first special use permit application filed by Demerus Company Landscaping Architects, I would ask all those who intend to provide testimony to come forward and be sworn. And Madam Clerk, would you rather them just stand?
Yes, sir, because there are more than 20 probably.
Okay.
Anyone who is going to be speaking during the first public hearing, if you will raise your right hand, acknowledge the Bible. You solemnly swear that the evidence you give to Town Council during this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk and Mayor and counsel. Folks, there's going to be a record of these proceedings, so I ask that all those who testify clearly identify themselves when they come to the lectern. A lot of times in day-to-day life, when you're talking to someone and they're asking you a question about mid-sentence, you can tell what the question's going to be, so I know I do at least. You tend to answer before the entire question gets out. That's not going to help us get a very clean record of the question and the answer, so I would ask you to be cognizant of that. Madam Chair, if there's no questions from me, we'll hear from Mr. Kirkland.
Thank you. Matt?
Matt Kirkland, I'm the planning director for the town of Oak Island. Your first public hearing tonight is for a proposed special use permit for a hotel. So, Demerus Company Landscape Architects has applied for a special use permit to allow a hotel within the community business zoning district.
Mr. Kirkland, could you hold on a moment?
Absolutely.
Although the PowerPoint or presentation appears to be on the main screen, I don't see it in front of us.
Ms. Demery is working on that, so somehow the feed is not coming through to the monitors. So, if you're getting texts from your friends and family, that they're, ah, there we go. Speak and thou shall. I'm a very powerful mayor.
Sorry to interrupt you, sir. I just wanted to make sure that the counsel can see what you're presenting.
Ready to go?
Yes, sir.
So, as I mentioned, this is to allow a hotel within the community business zoning district. The proposed hotel is located at the northwest corner of East Dolphin Drive and Third Place East. Tax parcel ID is 234 MB 002. The proposed hotel includes 106 rooms and approximately 50,000 square feet. Here in front of you, you have a zoning map showing the parcel highlighted in teal. Let's see if I can get a laser pointer pulled up here. There we go. So, it's this parcel here in red. As you can see, adjacent to it, going towards Middleton, is also community business zoning, the Elks and the beach pantry. In addition, there's R7 surrounding and OS open space to the rear there. So, as Mr. Eads mentioned, the applicant in special use permits has the burden of producing competent substantial evidence, tending to establish the facts and conditions. The Court of Appeals has approved four general standards for considering and approving special use permits, that it does not materially endanger the public health or safety, that meets all the required conditions and specifications, and will not substantially injure the value of a joint property that will be in harmony with the area in which it is located in general conformity with the comprehensive plan. In addition, in your agenda packet, staff has included Section 4.9.3 of the Unified Development Ordinance, which covers Town Council's actions and considerations during a special use permit hearing. That's all I have for you.
Let me just-
I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
I would like to clarify, counsel and Madam Mayor, that Section 4.9.3 does have some additional criteria, other than the four that Mr. Kirkland just described, and as I read the applicant's narrative, they address those criteria in their application packet. Mr. Richardson, do you have a comment about that?
As to the usual requirements?
Thank you. All right. According to my count, the agenda packet related to this application starts on page 3 with the staff memo and ends on page 28. Mr. Kirkland, would you like to offer staffs or the agenda packet related to this application into evidence as Exhibit 1?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson? Any objections?
No objections at all.
So, we'll receive the agenda packet related to this item, pages 1, excuse me, 3 through 28, into evidence as Exhibit 1. Mr. Kirkland, how many slides were on your presentation here? Four? Would you like to introduce those as Exhibit 2?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson, any objections?
We're presenting Exhibit 2 again.
The four slides he just, Mr. Kirkland, just went through?
No objection.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor, we'll receive into evidence the four PowerPoint slides presented by Mr. Kirkland as Exhibit 2, without objection. Mr. Richardson, any cross-examination of Mr. Kirkland at this time, with the understanding you can call him back up later if you deem appropriate?
I would ask just a couple of questions of Mr. Kirkland.
Certainly.
Mr. Kirkland, has the applicant done all of the conditions required for submission of a special use permit before the council tonight?
Yes.
Are there any technical specifications or other requirements that have not been satisfied by the applicant or consideration by the council?
To my knowledge, no.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Richardson, just so you know, if you'll go to the microphone when you need to speak, you're fine for that, but-
I will head and stand up.
Thank you.
Good idea.
I didn't catch your answer.
Yeah, can we have Matt repeat his first name?
I'm sorry, Mr. Richardson, will you, since, will you ask those questions again, please?
I'll ask the first question. Mr. Kirkland, has the applicant for Boardwalk Place LLC submitted a full and complete application in satisfaction of all the town's code of ordinance requirements for the council's consideration for the special use permit tonight?
Yes.
To your knowledge, are there any technical specifications or other requirements that have not been satisfied by the applicant for submission to the council for council's consideration tonight?
To my knowledge, no.
I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Members of the counsel, any questions of Mr. Kirkland?
Anyone? Not at this time, Matt. Thank you.
Now, a lot of people did sign up. Technically, you're entitled to cross-examine Mr. Kirkland as well, but we need to do this Does anyone who signed up and has been sworn in wish to ask Mr. Kirkland any questions based off his presentation and his testimony?
I do.
Okay. Ma'am, I believe your hand was up first, so-
Please come to the microphone.
My name is Janine Flexner. I live at 1730 West Pelican Drive. I go through this intersection multiple times a day. My concern is-
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
I'm asking the question.
Yes, ma'am, but procedurally, I have to make sure you have some semblance of standing to be able to testify. I kind of went over that earlier, so could you, number one, could you give me your name again?
Janine Flexner.
Flexner. And the property that you just identified-
1730 West Pelican Drive.
And in your best estimation, how far away or close, however you want to describe it, is that property from the property that is the subject of this application?
One mile.
Okay. Mr. Richardson, do you have any questions of Ms. Flexner regarding standing?
I would object on the basis that she lacks standing. She's not adjacent to a joint property, and a mile away is too disconnected to establish standing.
I would like to rebut that. I go through the intersection.
Ma'am, just, hold on.
Mr. Kelly, would you advise, rather than standing in the hall, would it help for them to go down where there's a monitor? Thank you. Stand by. There's a TV downstairs? Okay, all right. We will attempt to, Mr. Kelly's investigating. Thank you for letting us know that.
Is he going to give us a green light?
I'll tell you about two minutes, and you'll be good.
Madam Mayor, do you want to stand in recess until we work this out?
Yes, we will. We're going to recess this meeting briefly until we get the technical issues. Oh, we're good. All right. Never mind.
Sorry, Charlie. Get my hopes up.
If you'd signal me from the back, if for some reason we drop our voices or are too far from the microphone, if you'd let me know, please.
Ms. Flexner, in light of Mr. Richardson's objection, I need to ask you a few more questions. Do you contend that you will endure special damages distinct from the rest of the community if this application were to be granted? And if so, could you describe that for me?
Yes, in terms of the traffic and the safety. That intersection at Middleton and Dolphin, which is right where all those 106 hotel rooms and 100 additional parking spaces we'll go through, is a problem from April through October. There is a line that is backed up on Beach Drive consistently, every single day, multiple hours of the day. I go through that intersection multiple times a day. That's not only going to affect the traffic safety of cars, but of pedestrians as well. Plus, what about evacuation crisis? What happens then with all this additional traffic? It's too many. This is a problem. It is a public health or safety issue which would be endangered.
All right. Ms. Flexner, thank you for describing that for me. You are entitled to testify about your personal experience and observations, but unless you qualify as an expert, there are certain things-
Did you, what did you say? Please.
Under North Carolina law, you are entitled to testify about your personal observation and knowledge. However, there are certain areas, such as traffic impact, when you get to a scientific-type study, that unless you qualify as an expert, your testimony shouldn't be received. So, I need to ask you, do you have any specialized training in traffic patterns or anything?
No, I do not. But is there going to be a traffic study before this is approved?
Is that a-
I won't tolerate it. I won't. Laugh as you will. This is serious business that affects the town and you as its residents, and if you disrupt the procedure, I will ask you to leave.
All right. Ms. Flexner, over Mr. Richardson's objection, I'm going to recommend that we find that you have standing to at least cross-examine Mr. Kirkland.
Thank you.
So, do you have any questions of Mr. Kirkland?
I'm just wondering, as I understand it, I was confused about if the Court of Appeals has already approved the general standards for public safety, because how could they do that without a traffic study?
Ms., please, to the microphone.
We'll address that. As we mentioned, the burden of proving these four general standards falls on the applicant. The applicant will need to submit testimony to prove those to this town council.
So, has-
Ms. Flexner, let me clarify something, and Mr. Kirkland, feel free to correct me if you disagree. When you were referring to the Court of Appeals has approved certain standards, you were referring to the standard itself, not whether any particular application has or has not met that standard.
That's correct.
Okay. So, it's just kind of a litmus test that you compare an application to? Okay. Does that help you, Ms. Flexner?
That helps me, but I want to make sure there's a traffic study.
So noted.
Any further questions for Mr. Kirkland?
No. Thank you.
Okay. Any recross, Mr. Richardson, based on that testimony?
As to Mr. Kirkland, yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Kirkland, is there a requirement anywhere in the town of Oak Island that the applicant I represent tonight for Boardwalk Place LLC commission and produce a traffic impact analysis study?
The town does not currently have a requirement for a traffic impact analysis in our ordinance, no.
Mr. Kirkland? I need to set some of this down. Mr. Kirkland, under the town's code of ordinance for tonight's quasi-judicial proceeding, under Section 4.11.1.3, late testimony such as Ms. Flexner is not allowed as to the increase in vehicular traffic resulting from a proposed development and whether or not it would pose a danger to the public safety. Isn't that correct? I have no further questions of Mr. Kirkland at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Does anyone else who's signed up and been sworn in wish to cross-examine Mr. Kirkland? And I understand, folks, this is what, yes, ma'am, thank you. I didn't realize you were, I couldn't see you. The way this will work is people will testify, they will be subject to cross-examination, and then they will be subject to questions from the Board. If you have signed up to testify, you will have your opportunity after the applicant presents its evidence. So, we're not at the testimony point for other parties yet. We are at the, now we're going to be at the applicant's evidence, and then you cross-examine, and then after all that evidence is in, you will have an opportunity to come back up, if you have standing, and provide testimony. Mr. Richardson, well, any questions of Mr. Kirkland from the Board? Counsel, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll now hear from the applicant, Demerus Company Landscape Architects P L C.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. Good evening, Mayor, members of counsel. I'm Grady Richardson. I'm from the New Hanover County Bar in Wilmington, North Carolina. I spent a significant amount of time in my youth growing up here, played T-ball right here at Middleton Park. I represent the applicant, Boardwalk Place LLC, tonight. I'm going to have Mr. Stewart, who's the project director and designer of Boardwalk Place LLC and the application, come forward, give you an overview with some slides and a presentation of what the application entails, in addition to pages 1 through 28 of your agenda packet, which has already been accepted into evidence as Exhibit 1, and in addition to the slides by Mr. Kirkland as Exhibit 2. So, without further ado, I'll have Mr. Stewart come up and give you additional overview.
And I know Mr. Richardson just identified you, but I would ask you, as well as every witness, to, once you get up there, sir, to identify yourself and your relationship to this application.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel, staff, and residents of Oak Island. My name is Scott Stewart. I'm the applicant's project director and designer. I reside at 6933 Running Brook Terrace in Wilmington, North Carolina. I've resided there for close to 30 years. I am a developer, a landscape architect, a commercial contractor, and a realtor, and I've enjoyed a career as a developer in Wilmington and Cape Fear Region since I moved here in 1994. I enjoyed a practice in New Jersey as a landscape architect with a staff of 23. So, I've been practicing landscape architecture, which is not plants, it's land planting, new towns, cities, and communities. And yes, I do also planning designs, you know, several decades ago. So, I've been practicing for 45 years. Can I move forward with the presentation? Yes. All right. For tonight is a property that is zoned CB. CB is commercial business. It's been zoned in your comprehensive plan and Unified Development Ordinance for quite some time. In the CB zone, the ordinance provides 72 uses that are allowed on that property, even without this hearing tonight. What a special use permit is, is that there are special uses that are identified, there's 11 in your ordinance and comprehensive plan, that an applicant, such as Boardwalk Place, can select to choose to come before the Board with a very detailed presentation to make sure that it doesn't impact the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and also complies to all the specific checklist items and ordinances of the Unified Development Ordinance and Comprehensive Plan. That's why we're here tonight. Just as an overview, if you look at developing this property without the special use permit, the intensity of uses-
Mr. Stewart? I'm sorry. Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
I realize that we have, well, I'm assuming-
Oh, excuse me.
-this packet's that, but just as earlier, when Mr. Kirkland was testifying, it's not on my screen. Is this presentation on your screen?
No.
Would you like to have it?
It's on some, but not all.
Okay. This apparently is a hard copy of what's behind you, Mayor, but if you want to wait till we get it on our screens.
Right. And I apologize, but before I continue, I've created several exhibits, you know, compendium of about 35 drawings for you, also a list of compliance- compendium of about 35 drawings for you, also a list of compliance letters, which I'll go through. And there's also a small booklet with the listing, the 12 professionals that I've assembled over the past 20 months. And there's eight professionals here tonight to testify on behalf of any of my testimony tonight, including Mark Loudermilk, the architect, Matt Haley, a civil engineer, Cal Morgan, who's the appraiser and valuation, Rob Mao of Davie Resource Group, which is environmental, and Don Bennett, who's a traffic engineer. So yes, we did a traffic study, even though we weren't supposed to. So if you could distribute those items, I could go through them with the council, so you can navigate through them while I'm talking.
That is on our screen now. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Stewart, I believe the... We've got a hard copy that each member of council and staff has, that you are showing on the projection, and it's on their computer. We'll go ahead and identify this as Exhibit 3, and by the time we get through with it, we'll move that into the record at the end of it.
Then I would respectfully request that Exhibit 4 be the compendium that everyone has, is 8 and 1/2 by 11, that has a list of the development team. And then on Section 1 is the narrative, which is corrected, because the narrative that is online has two typos in it. The first paragraph said Third Place West, and it's supposed to be Third Place East, and there was a comparison of the CD district, and that's actually the CB district. So I'm entering the narrative in order to correct the record. And then for your preview during the presentation, I put the design criteria legend here. So that specifically states all the acreages, the parking, all the mechanics of the project that comply to the ordinance. So that's listed for you, in case you have any questions. It gives the arithmetic account of parking and land use. And then the other sections are resumes and portfolio of the design team I assembled for this project, which individually, over the past 20 years, I've worked with, but this is the first time collectively I've put these 12 consultants together in order to approach this project. The item number five I'd like to enter into record are a series of four letters. One is from Brunswick Electric Membership Corporation, providing the availability of service for the property. Second letter is a February 8 letter from J.C. Morgan, which is a real estate appraiser, based on the evaluation of the property. There'll be no significant impact on values. And Cal is here tonight. There is a two-page summary of a transportation impact analysis that was done on the project. It's an executive summary, but the traffic study is actually over 100 pages. So the executive summary, which I'll get to later on in the presentation, is just a three-page analysis of 100 pages. And what we ended up doing with the traffic analysis, we looked at it in two different ways, is that the project right now, the Boardwalk Place, is broken up into three components. There is a restaurant, there is retail, and there's a hotel. I asked Davenport engineers to look at the traffic as if it was out on the main Oakland Avenue, compartmentalized into three separate uses, and how that behaves from a way of traffic, coming and going. And then because of the location of Boardwalk Place, I asked them to look at the behavior and the traffic pattern for a resort-type facility, because a hotel and a restaurant and a retail cohesively is a small mixed-use project, and that behaves differently from a traffic standpoint. So those two comparisons are here. Mr. Bennett is here tonight to answer any questions concerning the results of his executive summary. The last letter is from Woods Engineering, which is a structural engineering firm from Wilmington, because this project is requiring us to build a podium that's 13 feet high so we can park underneath it and encapsulate all that parking. And we wanted to make certain that, you know, we've engaged a structural engineer to make sure that this is a feasible, structurally sound site to build the design that you're about to see. So we not only analyzed the site from a way of surveying and environmental and storm order, and soils, and infiltration, and wetlands, but we also looked at the geotechnical aspects of the property and a structural engineer to verify. The letter is saying that, yes, we're saying today, and what you're seeing tonight, you know, is feasible and structurally sound to be construction.
Sir, is this gentleman here tonight to answer questions?
Excuse me? Woods Engineering?
The gentleman you just referred to, is he here this evening?
No, he's not, but the architect, Mark Loudermilk, who is, you know, designed the building, is working with Woods Engineering, is here for his testimony. All right.
They have everything.
Can we move on?
Please.
Okay, great. All right, so the property, as you well know, located is about 350 feet from the Middleton Avenue Bridge and intersection on East Dolphin Drive. So these two exhibits, you know, demonstrate the approximate location with the exact location of the property, showing it's a zone CB. This is Exhibit Number 2, is an excerpt from the, you know, tax records, which shows, you know, the property boundary, the location, but the image on the right-hand side shows a red dashed line because it's the mission of Boardwalk Place to extend pedestrian sidewalk corridor from Middleton Avenue to along East Dolphin Drive and improve Third Place East, which is Paper Street, which is actually the front yard of our property. And then, of course, connectivity where it's possible out towards the beach.
Mr. Stewart, I'm sorry. I'm trying to make sure we have a clean record.
Yes, sir.
You just said this is Exhibit 2. Exhibit 2...
Excuse me, it's drawing number 2.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
And the... By drawing 2, bottom right corner, that 2 there, is that...
Yeah, correct.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for acknowledging that. Okay, of course, as I mentioned, in order to... A project and come before you tonight, I'd mentioned 20... It's about 20 months, almost two years, we've involved with this project. So the first thing we have to do is do a property survey. We have to have a wetland delineation and an analysis of the vegetation and the soils. And that is all shown graphically on this map, because you have to also take a look at the mean-high waterline if you're thinking about doing infiltration. And then there is something called an area of environmental concern, which is a buffer area that you have to acknowledge as you're coming with a building envelope to design, you know, this property. This exhibit, which is drawing number 4, shows the use on the land as for a parking allocation. So the parking allocation is designed based on all the uses that we chose. I've mentioned that there are 11 special use areas that we could have chosen, and especially, you know, the special uses on the... That are in the ordinance right now are anywhere from a college to a treatment plant, to a bowling alley, to mini golf, to audiovisual, to a car wash, to HVAC repair, a nightclub, rental equipment, a fast-food facility, and a farm stand. But then, you know, we chose a hotel. The reason why we chose a hotel, because of the commerce ability to build a facility like this, as well as looking at the traffic generated from a hotel is woefully less than the traffic generated from the as-of-right uses that are on this property. Out of the as-of-right uses that are permitted of the 72 that we could choose from, the traffic would be exceedingly higher than what we want to generate. The property is going to be generating traffic. It is zoned commercial, so something's going to happen on this. The intensity is something that we're sensitive to. So right now, that's a... East Dolphin Drive is a town street, and Middleton Road is an NC DOT street. And right now, it's operating at something called a level of Service A, which means it's a safe road in accordance to the science of traffic engineering. But that could end up being asked of Mr. Bennett later on. So in order to choose the uses, on the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see, you know, parking spaces, about 198 spaces. If you cut the site in half, the hotel is on the right-hand side, and the restaurant and the retail is on the left-hand side. And those boxes in the drawing, there's a small one. I don't know if this laser works. Doesn't. There's a small box on the left in the first row of parking that is for equipment area for a splash pad. The center rectangle is for a swimming pool infrastructure, and the smaller one in upper right-hand corner is for laundry service for the hotel. The site fronts Third Place East. So that's our front yard, which requires a 20-foot setback. And the side yard, which faces along East Dolphin Drive, is actually our side yard as an 8-foot setback. There's a required 10-foot setback in the ordinance from our rear of the property or the property that interfaces with the Elks. And let's see, what else could I mention about the setbacks? Because once we're defining the building envelope, you'll see that green area and that gray area. I mentioned earlier, there's an area of environmental concern. The gray area on the top, which is, happens to be on drawing 5, is the mean-high waterline of... Excuse me. Yeah, mean-high waterline of the site. It's at elevation 1.7. So we have to have about a 75-foot setback from that line, which we can build in. The green area is an area that we can build in. So there's approximately 39,150 square feet of the area of environmental concern, which is the gray area and the green area. We're allowed to cover 30% of that, or 11,150 square feet. I think I have those numbers right. So we elected to chose that footprint because we want to make sure that we are within the threshold of coverage in the area of environmental concern, and that's what this exhibit demonstrates. There we go. This plan is the, what I call, the promenade plan. Now, we had a parking area on the grade, and then 13 feet above that is this promenade area, which is where the hotel and the restaurant and the retail are located, along with the swimming pool for the hotel and the splash pad for the restaurant and retail. And that's split in half because there's a larger rectangle there. So there is a open space in the deck or the promenade area in order visually and physically separate the hotel and the restaurant and the retail. This plan shows there's 53 rooms on the first floor of the hotel or in the promenade area. There's an outdoor bar and recreation area, and there's a swimming pool. And on the left-hand side is a restaurant with a minimum square footage of about 5,350 square feet. And then there's about 997 square feet of retail broken up in those two buildings. Why I'm mentioning those numbers is because the parking that is... You need to design to be allocated beneath this, has to comply with the square footages of the seating areas and the uses of the retail area and the uses of the hotel. And this is what I'm calling the mezzanine area, or the second floor of the hotel, another 53 rooms. And this is drawing number 7. And then there's a small in the upper left-hand corner is the overlook or waiting area of the second floor of the restaurant. This is a... The landscape plan, which is required, and it was called out through, my understanding, that, you know, I comply with all the trees and shrubs in the ordinance. However, someone called out that English ivy and escanthus grass are invasive plants. So for tonight, if this moves forward with your endorsement, I would strike using English ivy and escanthus grass as an invasive plant. There is a thorny ilii agnus, which is on your plant list, that was also an invasive plant. So I'll remove that if the town requires, but that's also a approved plant right now on your plant list.
Thank you.
And I'd probably recommend to...
Remove that.
...remove that from the...
Done.
Okay. And the landscape plan is on drawing number 8. So when you are landscaping something like this, you have to take care of buffering, and there's an ordinance requirement of 8% of the size of the parking facility. Of course, we can't plant underneath, you know, in a parking deck, so we took that arithmetic equation of about 11,000 square feet, and we put additional planting along the perimeter of where you see all the plants. Along Third Place East has a very heavy opaque buffer, opaque meaning a very heavy screen of about 75% opacity. So when it's installed, it'll be a screen. We don't have to wait 15 years for it to mature. And then there's a small upland area within that area of environmental concern to the top of the page, so we want to re-establish in that upland area a wetland area of about 8,000 square feet. This is the landscape program for the hotel courtyard on the right and the restaurant and retail on the left. And that's drawing number 9. Drawing number 10, where does all the water go? That's why Matt Haley is here tonight from Cape Fear Engineering. We found that through the soils investigation infiltration studies that Davie Resource did for us, that the mean-high waterline is at 1.7. So when you use a engineered stormwater program, you have to be two feet above that elevation of 1.7. So you have to be up at 3.7. The elevation of the site is about 6 and 1/2 to 7 is the elevation. So we have a 2-foot horizon that we can put in these infiltration rain tanks in order to take in 85% of the water that we're capturing and treating before it leaves the site in those blue arrows. And we bifurcated that and split it into two permit areas, one for the hotel and on the left for the restaurant and the retail. And Matt Haley is here tonight, in case there's any questions regarding this design program. The same design program that was utilized in a project that I was a consultant on in Wilmington called Arboretum Village... Excuse me, Arboretum West and Arboretum Village. I did for Tribute Properties. Drawing number 11 is further showing the entire site, where up in the upper portion of the exhibit, there is a boardwalk across the wetland areas, which is about 1,000 linear feet, that we'd like to create as a wildlife sanctuary boardwalk with educational boards for the flora fauna and the aquatics, and have an easement over that for the public use that's connected along Third Place East, because we have a 20-foot setback. I wanted to put a pedestrian promenade there of about 7 feet wide in a colonnade of trees that goes back to access the public shared boardwalk program. Drawing number 12 shows the plan on the floor plan of the hotel and the restaurant and the retail, and to show how the use is there in the building form, because, you know, landscape architecture is not plants. Landscape architecture is sculpting the land for use. And we have to be sensitive, not only on the immediate neighborhood, but we have to be sensitive to what the plan, what the land can support. So I've explained to you that we've done all the analysis for the land from a surveyor point, for the soils, for the infiltration, for the storm order, for the setbacks, to make sure that the envelope we end up is going to behave properly with the surrounding environment. And how do we increase those opportunities for the public is to create a park for them in the back of the wildlife sanctuary boardwalk, which I heard that there's a recreation department is interested in building a walkway along the Davis Canal. This could be an entrance, because only 200 feet to the west is a connection to the canal. So this could be a welcoming opening to access that canal program, which I hope comes to fruition. I'd be very excited to participate in that. Okay, now we get to how we've been working... Okay, now we get to how we've been working so hard. I have to just do a shout-out to Mark Loudermilk and Phil Hood and Wynne of Mark Loudermilk's office, because we worked very hard on trying to make the skin or the elevations of this program blend in with the architecture of Oak Island. This exhibit, which is drawing number 13, shows examples of the architecture, and in particular, the ones in the upper-left-hand corner, we're borrowing from these buildings in order to decorate the elevations and the skin of the Boardwalk Place program. So in the lower-right-hand corner of drawing number 14, you'll see on the next 15 exhibits, a little key map that shows a little red triangle that shows, and a dot that shows the view of where you're at. So right now, we're on East Dolphin Drive looking at the front entrance, which is actually in the side yard, because across the street are the rear yards of the existing homes. So this is the front of the entrance to the hotel, which is the column on the right, which is a stair column and two elevators to get up and down. And then on the left is the entrance, which is to the restaurant and to the retail. What we're going to do now with the magic of Mark's office is we're going to go up on the promenade level, or say, the second floor, where those folks are standing, to look on drawing number 15, which clearly shows that big, large rectangular section I told you was going to physically and visually separate the hotel from the restaurant and the retail, but done very attractively, where there's a lot of green. You know, there was English ivy on that, but I have to find out another, you know, plant to grow on that wall. So all the parking is underneath. And what we're going to do first, because the subject of this hearing is the special use for the hotel use. Yes, this property can be built with just CB and 72 other uses. But a hotel, creating a small mixed-use development here in this location, is going to do something that is near and dear to my heart, because I've been doing something called TND, Traditional Neighborhood Design. I'm the one that brought new urbanism to this town in Wilmington, the southeast, 30 years ago, where you can use a mix of uses instead of compartmentalizing everything. So what attracted me to this project was that this area, this only CB area in this portion of the island, could actually bring services to this immediate area instead of traveling over the bridge constantly to get all your services on the main, you know, commercial corridor. And you have to do it so it's done attractively and is fiscally sound, that we can maintain it. So moving to the drawing 16, we're going to go to the right and visit the hotel first. So this is now, we're in the courtyard of the hotel. And if you notice the way it's designed, we are encapsulating, you know, the two courtyards. So we control the noise, the light, and the privacy, and the protection, because we have to worry about hurricanes. So this structure is elevated because it's not a matter of if it's going to happen, it's when it's going to happen. That's why we're building a structure to withstand that type of weather event. So from this drawing on 17, we're going to go back to the outdoor bar and entertainment area for the hotel, which will look something like this. Can you see where the red arrow is? So you can see exactly where we're in at the hotel. On drawing number 18, we're back to where we were before, because now we're going to go to the left-hand side and visit the restaurant court area where the splash pad's going to be, which is more the public realm. Because when you're visiting a hotel, we want to make sure we separate those uses for the privacy of the people that are visiting in the hotel. So now we're going to go to that colonnade of trees on drawing number 19. So you're coming up that stair column or elevator from the front entrance, and you're greeted with this view to go back to the, you know, towards the rear, which has a view of that wildlife sanctuary park. And now we're going to go to the left where the splash pad is, which is encapsulated with the restaurant to the rear and the retail services to the right. And this is to demonstrate that we're sensitive to, you know, there's weather events. We want to make sure that this facility is visited even during inclement weather. So there, you know, there's a generous 12-foot overhang on the interior courtyard area of the retail and the restaurant area. Okay, now we're back to the driveway court, but we're on the opposite side. Before, we were looking from the area in the distance where you can see the ocean, you know, through that second floor. So at this point, we're going to go back to the front. This is on drawing number 22. Now we're going to go back to the front, so we're drawing 23. The reason why I came back here is because now we're going to travel down East Dolphin Drive to Third Place East, which is a paper street. It's not built. Part of the application is that Boardwalk Place will build that street and provide 19 parking spaces for the town's use and also an access to the wildlife sanctuary park to the rear. So now we're on slide 24. This is the corner of East Dolphin Drive and Third Place East. So you notice the amount of vegetation that we're proposing in order to soften the edge of the hotel. And the hotel takes on a very residential feel rather than some of the hotels that you're familiar with. And there's a very strong buffer on the right-hand side. The buffer on the, let's see, south side, excuse me, north side of Third Place East is eight foot wide, which is a, I think the ordinance requires 7.5 feet if you're interfacing with a commercial property, residential. So we want eight feet, a little bit thicker. So you put some more vegetation in there. Now we're on Third Place East, and we're looking down the sidewalk promenade that's going to go to the rear. And we're on drawing 25. So now we're going to go to drawing 26. And that's the plan view of the wildlife sanctuary boardwalk, which is about 1,000 linear feet. That's three football fields. That's, you know, a 10-minute walk for a five-year-old and a 70-year-old, which I'm almost there.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Is that boardwalk that's shown there going to be open to the public and available for the public's access?
Yes, as previously mentioned, it's the intent of Boardwalk Place LLC to build this facility, provide an easement for the public to enjoy at their leisure and access through Third Place East.
And with respect to the splash pad on slide 20, is that going to be open to the public along with public access to the restaurant and other retail shops?
That's correct.
And is anything about the structure that's being shown tonight in excess of the height limitations of the Town of Oak Island?
No, it's 35 feet.
So you satisfy the town's height restrictions?
That's correct.
Go ahead.
So this is a plan view of the wildlife sanctuary boardwalk. And you'll see on the bottom of the drawing number 26, that's where the hotel is. And on to the, just left in the bottom-left, you'll see the restaurant and a deck for outdoor dining to overview this. So now we're going to walk around the boardwalk. We're going to start in the lower-right-hand corner and walk on the boardwalk. And then you'll see the hotel in the background. The restaurant is to the very right of the rear elevation. And that gentleman that's looking to the left on drawing number 27 is actually looking at this. Yes, I physically go out and do this work with Rob Mau, who I've known now 38 years, oh my god, 40 years.
And that's slide 28?
That's slide 28. And what was really neat about this...
Drawing 28.
Drawing 28. About this experience is that there's a, along the perimeter of the property, which I'm going to go back to that slide. That follows, slide 26 follows like the property line. And there's a upland area along that area, which allows these gazebos to be easily built. And we wouldn't need, we'd only need a minor camera permit for this. And on the interior of it, there's just a lot of fragmites, which we're allowed to traverse, you know, across those, that vegetation to build this. So Mr. Mau is here tonight in case there's any question of the feasibility of this is permissible. I'm going to move forward to slide 29, another view, based on the lower-right-hand corner of the key map. If we're coming around to the restaurant, which is in the upper-right, you'll see that little overlook. Now we're going to slide 30. We're going to jump up to that overlook and look back to the wildlife sanctuary park. Now we're on slide 31. We are looking on East Dolphin Drive.
Mr. Stewart, going back to slide 30?
Yes.
Or picture 30. In the bottom-left of that picture, is that the outdoor dining that's facing the nature area?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's away from any residential structures?
That's correct.
And...
The Elks is next door. That's correct.
You cannot see it from either Dolphin or Third Place unless you're on the side where the adjacent property is located.
Yeah, the commercial use next door, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, this elevation on East Dolphin Drive is the one, you know, closest to Middleton Avenue, which shows the typical entrance into the parking area and how pedestrians get up to the promenade level. And that is the face of the retail stores facing East Dolphin Drive. And to the right, you'll see the column that's 35 feet high that has the stairs and the elevators, access up to the public spaces, I call it. We're back here on Third Place Avenue, because you're wondering, let's see, well, it looks great during the day, but what's it going to look like at night? Are you going to have a lot of light fixtures and glowing all over the place? And that's not what I do. We're going to use LED lighting. We're going to use, similar to a hotel that I was a consultant on in Durham Hyatt, it was the Durham Hyatt next to South Point. We just use 42-inch-high bollards, they're called, with an LED fixture on it. And you have to comply to the safety of, you know, all pedestrians. So you have to have something called a foot candle, so the pathways are lit enough to navigate them, and they're not, you know, dangerous. So that's called a .33 foot candle. So the idea on...
Mr. Stewart, back on 32.
Yes.
You're showing Third Place Street, which is a public street, but it's on paper right now.
Correct.
Basically a dirt road right now.
Correct.
And the applicant that we represent is going to pay for the improvements that are shown on picture 32?
You know, that'll have to be worked out with the town, because I think, similar to like, I am the authority appointment of agent to represent Boardwalk Place and assemble a team to mitigate the improvements of this. I would think the town, and this is just my suggestion, to appoint Boardwalk Place LLC as their authority appointment of agent, so we can move forward with getting all the permits and requirements and engineering done to build Third Place East, which has 19 parking spaces, and I think two of which are handicapped, closest to the boardwalk. And so the last slide, I'm going to, well, next to the last slide, slide 33, gives you an idea of, you know, uplighting the trees and the pathways with low-level lighting, so the nightscape is not overwhelming. It's more like, you know, lighting the path for the use rather than having 12 or 13-foot-high, you know, fixtures. The last slide is the culmination of what the first was. The first was, slide, I put together, you know, all these ideas of the images and the uses that we could have at Boardwalk Place. But this series of nine images are the ones that I just presented to you. The top is, in the center, is the center court looking down, where the pool is to the right, which is the right slide on the top right, and the splash pad on the top left. And the center's, three photographs is the center of the hotel and the, you know, vertical columns for the stair and elevators. And to the left is the retail, and to the right is the hotel. And then the bottom series of drawings have to do with Third Place East and access to the wildlife natural boardwalk.
Mr. Stewart, with respect to, I think for the record, that, those slides have been marked as Exhibit 3 collectively. I have a few questions for you. Are you familiar with the Town of Oak Island's code of ordinances?
Yes.
You have any question?
Yes.
All right, so the only part of this that we're here about tonight for a special use permit is a hotel?
That's correct.
Okay. Table of permitted uses, some examples of things that are permitted as a matter of right without any benefit of a public hearing, would include a grocery store?
Yes.
More restaurants?
Yes.
A movie theater?
Yes.
A bar, or bars?
Yes.
An ABC liquor store?
Yes.
An indoor athletic exercise facility?
That's correct.
Community centers?
Correct.
Dance halls?
Correct.
Launder mats?
Correct.
Banks?
Correct.
Schools, trade, or vocational?
Correct.
Dry cleaners?
Correct.
The parking spaces, I believe you said, is 198 spaces. Approximately how many of those are inside the structure and not on either Pelican or Third Place?
All 198 are encapsulated in that parking area and are screened on all four sides. If you notice, in the design, there's no rear yard. All four sides are a front elevation, because we want it to blend in from every view. As you're coming over the Middleton Bridge, you'll see in the distance the restaurant and the, you know, wildlife sanctuary park boardwalk. And then as you're approaching the facility, you see a front of the retail. And if you finally come on our side yard on East Dolphin Drive, it's another front yard. You turn down Third Place East, and it's another front yard and access and an entrance way to a public park.
And very early on, with respect to this exhibit, on picture 2, you talked about a red outline. And just explain again, that's a pedestrian sidewalk that Boardwalk Place LLC is building as part of this application for the benefit of the public to use and enjoy that's not otherwise there.
Correct.
And it's not required under the town zoning ordinance?
It's required by me.
But not the town zoning ordinance?
Right. You have to recognize, when you're doing a project like this, that it has to be pedestrian-friendly, want to promote, you know, golf carts, walking, bikes. You know, there's something in the ordinance that parking lot over 20 spaces, you're supposed to put five bicycle parking spaces. So I said, that's not good enough. We put 58, and there's actually room for 65. Because I think if, the more we can have different modes of transportation, where people are biking to this facility to spend an afternoon at, we would win with what we're trying to achieve here.
And with respect to environment, is there anything that's being compromised under the Coastal Area Management Act, known as CAMA, or any other environmental rules and regulations as part of this project?
No, there is not. And Rob Mau is here tonight in case you wanted to answer that question. He's the team member that's doing all the environmental permitting. And this exhibit, which is the first exhibit, which I told you, I showed you all the uses. In the center of that, on the bottom, is the pool I designed and built for the Durham Hyatt out in South Point. And that is the low-level lighting and the fixtures that we're going to be using for, right next to that pool area. You see that little bollard there that's a little wood? It's actually EPE, and that's the light fixture. That's what it looks like during the day. And that's how, you know, tall the, or short, you know, the lighting's going to be.
Mr. Stewart, just so the record's clear, you just said the first exhibit I'm showing you, you were actually referring to the cover page of Exhibit 3.
Right, and it's known as Images.
So it's the cover page of what's been marked as Exhibit 3?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks for that correction.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Stewart, I believe you have identified as Exhibit 4, a compilation that's tabbed 1 through 8. And as I understand it, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that's the narrative that's in the application under Tab 1. And then the credentials of yourself, Mr. Loudermilk, Tab 4, Mr. Haley, the project manager for the Stormwater, Tab 5, Cal Morgan's credentials and CV and letter of harmony with respect to the value of adjoining properties or nearby properties, is Tab 6. Then Mr. Mau from Land Management Group, his resume and qualifications. And then Don Bennett under Tab 8, regarding traffic. And with respect to traffic, just to be clear, is there any sort of traffic study required as part of anything you have assembled on behalf of Boardwalk Place? as part of anything you have assembled on behalf of Boardwalk Place LLC for tonight for council's consideration under the Town of Oak Island's zoning ordinances?
No, it was not required, however, we did one. And as I earlier explained in the beginning of the presentation, we looked at two scenarios. If this was built out on Main Street, compartmentalized into three uses, a restaurant, retail, and a hotel, and how that would behave for traffic. And the traffic study shows in something called peak hours, like on a Saturday or Sunday, especially during the summer months. And I think in the peak hours, and Mr. Bennett could correct me, I think it's somewhere around 100 to 137 trips on the peak hour for a hotel. But if it was behaving like it's designed as a resort hotel, where, you know, all the uses are complementary to each other, for a resort hotel with all these uses, it's about 37 trips. That's the science. So the average is going to be around 50 to 65 trips. Then I looked at, I asked Don, and he brought something else along, and that traffic study is done, we can hand it out, but it's 100 pages, and the best thing to look at, there's a lot of science in it, was the executive summary. And Mr. Bennett explained to me, because I've known Don a long time, he was the traffic engineer of City of Wilmington for 30 years, and he said, Scott, this is probably the first time in my career, he went on to Davenport, that a project is operating at a Level Service A, you know, before it's built, and operates at a Level Service A after it's built. He can testify to that. And that's the first time I've heard the emotions from a traffic engineer. Is there anything else that I need to cover?
Well, yeah, I'd like to, for the record, you previously identified collectively the Brunswick Electric letter, Mr. Morgan, the appraiser's letter, Mr. Bennett's executive summary, and then the Woods Engineering letter?
Correct.
All as Exhibit 5. I would ask that, for the record, we clear that up by making the Brunswick Electric letter as Exhibit 5, Cal Morgan's letter regarding the value aspect of the special-use permit as Exhibit 6, the executive summary by Mr. Bennett as Exhibit 7, and then the Woods Engineering letter as Exhibit 8.
Thank you. One thing I forgot to mention was Mr. Bennett's work. I asked him to look at a scenario that, what if we didn't want to have a hotel? And we just let the site, we didn't come before the board, and we just submitted an application and a site plan for all the uses that were allowed, you know, within the CB district? Which means we can fit, and I know we can fit, from an environmental standpoint, from a credibility standpoint, for Stormwater's standpoint, 198 parking spaces on that property. To have this type of an investment, and to make sure that Hurricane Hazel doesn't come again, because I designed all my projects around Hurricane Hazel, it hit in 1954, I knew Odell Williamson, I met him 35 years ago. Now, we have to lift it up. And if we lift it up, we could probably fit about 45,000 square feet of commercial space up there in the menu of the 72 items that are in your ordinance. We're allowed to do that by law. We don't have to come before you to do that. And Mr. Bennett did a very short summary of looking at that use and what kind of traffic will that generate. Right now, we're generating somewhere between, really, 65 to 100 trips on a peak hour. If we were to pack that full of commercial uses, you're looking at close to 237 trips, almost double the time, two and a half times the traffic. And then that, all of a sudden, affects what the mission for this was, to blend this into the community, make the skin of the building blend with the architecture, and make it pedestrian-friendly. So a hotel use is probably one of the most practicals. I understand through, he's talking to Matt and the planning staff here, that there's been a loss of about 76 hotel rooms on the island over the years, from either the parking or fire or, you know, the last hurricane. So if we're proposing 106 rooms, and there were 76 behaving on the island, we're just increasing that by about, you know, 30 some-odd more rooms. So we feel it was the proper use, it makes the project fiscally and financially feasible. And I just entertain any questions you may have. We have a list of consultants, it may be a long night, but I tried to answer all the questions. I understood, you know, the traffic issue that was first brought up, but I think once you understand what the possibilities could be if we don't do this process, and lock in and present you with a feasible plan that checks all the boxes, and doing all the studies that we've done the past 20 months, that's how long it takes to get to this point.
Mayor, Mr. Eads, members of council, at this time, I would move Exhibits 3 through 8 into the record, and I believe that concludes our presentation of our application materials. Mr. Stewart and the team is available to answer any questions council may have, or anyone with standing may wish to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Any objections by those who have sworn in to testify to the receipt of Exhibits by my mark, correct me if I'm wrong, 3 through 8, tendered by the applicant? Madam Clerk, let the record reflect, no objections?
You have somebody over here?
Sure.
Sorry, I didn't see you.
I'm new to this kind of stuff, but I'm old to this island. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Scott Stewart.
You're going to be my neighbor. I own 124 and 122 East Beach.
Ma'am, if you would...
We've got a process, and just be patient. Let's follow process.
If you would just identify yourself, please?
I will.
And any relationship you have to the property, whether it be you own property near it, however you want, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so...
Yes, sir. I'm Belinda Chofidy. I'm property owner of 122 and 124 East Beach.
And for the record, how close or far is that?
You can pull up that picture, drawing 13, both of my homes are on it. Okay, on the left-hand lower corner, those are my two homes.
Okay. And how far are those from the subject?
Across the street.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Richardson, any questions regarding standing?
No.
Any objections?
No.
All right, Ms. Chofidy?
Please have that. Yes, sir.
Mr. Eads?
Ms. Chofidy?
Can we verify that Ms. Chofidy has been sworn in?
Yeah.
It's my hand.
Okay, good. Okay, just want to make sure.
And could you spell your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you spell your name for the record, please?
B-E-L-I-N-D-A, S-H-O-W, F is in Fred, E-T-Y.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Chofidy, we're at a point, right now, you have an opportunity to object to the exhibits. That was the question I posed.
Okay. I do object to not having enough information about one of the exhibits, several. Number one being, do the kayakers still have access to Davis Canal once they build that conservation walkway?
At that juncture?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I mean, it's kind of a mixed thing, but I'm going to let you, I'm going to consider that cross-examination, so can you address that, sir?
Where is your access right now, at the end of Third, the Paper Street?
Mr. Stewart, could you step forward to the microphone or borrow the attorney's microphone?
So where do you put your kayaks in, at the end of Third Street, which is the end of...
Actually, we go all the way to the end of the island, and then we kind of pull out around the access that comes up behind here.
Right, so Third Place East is that Paper Street, which is, you leave your rear yard, you go down the end of that, and you drop your kayak?
But we go, we go under that bridge at Middleton, when we have.
Oh, okay. Yeah, there's, we're not going to impede any kayak.
You can come back. Look, you've got this bike, so you can stand there, and she can stand there.
Okay.
We don't need to do that. That can break us.
Where do you want me, sir?
Right here.
Thank you. I knew this, I'm sorry.
Yes, it's feedback from the portable mic.
This exhibit right here is drawing number 12.
It's actually Exhibit 3, drawing 12.
Oh, drawing 12, excuse me. So the boardwalk that you see, the kayaks are actually, that corridor just to the upper-right-hand corner, there's a channel out there that I walked, and that's where you bring your kayaks in. So this area, there's, and if you've been through there, you know all that vegetation is on your right-hand side as you're passing our property, and there's a small upland area there. So there's nowhere to get your kayak in there.
No.
But you, yeah, but you'll, that corridor, that you're kayaking is going to be untouched, it's not on our property. I made a suggestion that if the Recreation Department goes forward with their Davis Canal Walkway, that would be terrific for us to connect on the top of this boardwalk to that walkway. But in order to do that and get it permitted, we're going to have to build a much higher elevation, so the kayakers can get through it, because it's navigable water.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. So we would not impede any navigable waters at all, so you continue to enjoy kayaking.
Okay, I have one more question.
Sure.
You mentioned that you guys had an easement or, for the naturalization, like, the setback for your fencing. I don't have a copy of this, even though it's going to be next to me. What were those again? It sounded like they were all single-digit feet.
Oh, oh.
That's an easement.
Let's see, I've mentioned that...
Fencing.
Fencing...
Well, the actual, the margin next to the, the structures that'll be next to this property.
Okay, so...
And to the road, and to the road.
Right, Third Place East is where all the parking is on extreme right-hand side. That's a Paper Street, that's a Town Street.
I know, that runs right.
Right. And that, that is actually our front yard, because the ordinance has written that when you have a commercial property, the shortest dimension of the property is the front yard. I thought it was the East Dolphin Drive. In fact, I designed it that way first, and when we dug in and realized it wasn't, we had to redesign the project. So Third Place East is the front yard, which is a 20-foot setback. We're going to be landscaping that quarter, you know, just with a sidewalk, and then on the right-hand side, there's a house there in the lower right-hand corner, we have an eight-foot-wide buffer, where we're putting in a lot of, right, trees and hollies at a semi-mature size, so we can have, you know, an instant screen there. And then on, along East Dolphin Drive, there's the right-of-way, which is about 15 feet wide to the sidewalk, and then we have an eight-foot setback line. So when, if we had discussions with the town about putting, initially, the design had parallel parking along the front, they said, no, we want to see trees and green space. So we took that parking out, that was, we didn't need it, we were going to put that in for the town, so we, instead of using that as a landscape corridor. So the entire perimeter of the project is landscaped, with the exception of, on extreme left-hand side, there's a service lane in order to go back to the dumpsters for the project in the back, and then there was something else about, talk about infrastructure, I'm glad you brought this up, because...
I'm glad I am, too.
We, we talked to the, we had a meeting with the town on the 12th of December with the entire staff in order to disclose the work we've been doing for the past year. And we tweaked the design, one of the issues was infrastructure, you know, what about sewer? Do we need to build a lift station for our project? Because this project, the way it's designed, needs 32,000 gallons a day for sewer, and where does that go? So we have to build a lift station, and then we have to...
32,000?
32,000, right.
32,000 gallons of sewage?
Right. And that will be collected in a lift station and brought into a force main that goes over Middleton Road on the corner, where the lift station is, will be processed there, we'll have to upgrade that, and then it goes into the treatment plant.
Well, now, will that lift station affect?
Ms. Chofidy, could you just please speak a little closer to the microphone?
Yeah, I'm so sorry, I'm trying to do this in a friendly way, I forget I'm in front of...
I understand, no, that's perfectly fine, but just so that everyone can hear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so 35,000, 32,000 gallons of sewage to a lift station, where is the lift station going to be located, next to my house?
Right now, on, on our property?
Mm-hmm.
It's in the area of where the dumpsters are, on that, at the end of that service lane, and then there'll be something called a force main, which, a lot of the sewer on Oak Island is like a force main or pressure system, it's not gravity.
Yes, it is.
And so that's what we're using, and it's very common to bring the effluent out to East Dolphin Drive, over to Middleton, and then go over to where the lift station is for the town on the corner, and it goes and gets treatment.
Now, will that eventually process across the bridge, like the old sewer did?
That's a question...
From the lift station?
That's a question for Matt Haley of Cape Fear Engineering.
Mr. Haley, can you come to the microphone, please?
Before Mr. Haley speaks, I just want to make sure, the question you had, Ms. Chofidy, about setback fencing, has that been addressed?
I think it has been on your part. I actually applied for a fence permit downstairs today.
Microphone, thank you.
I applied for a fence permit today downstairs. Julie Edge was very helpful, she's the one that helped me fill out the forms. I have someone coming tomorrow to do that. But when I filled out that form downstairs for me to have a setback of footage, I think my setback was quite a bit more than yours is being allowed.
Well, I'm not putting a fence, I'm not constructing a fence, I'm putting in landscaping.
And I'm putting a fence to protect my land.
All right. Okay.
So...
So, okay, Mr. Haley, want to come up here, and Ms. Chofidy, what's the question you had for Stormwater purposes regarding the sewer effluent for Mr. Haley to try to address for you?
I know that, oh, okay, nice to meet you, Mr. Haley, Lynn Chofidy. Basically, 32,000 gallons of sewage, where is that going to leave the island and go to? And is that going to be a corporate investment with this firm, or are we going to be responsible for the environmental impact and the water impact?
So I'm Matt Haley with Cape Fear Engineering. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of North Carolina. To answer your question, yes, this project will generate wastewater flows. When people use the hotel and the restaurants, they'll, you know, turn on the sinks and flush the toilets. We've estimated approximately 32,000 gallons per day to be generated by this project. That is per the state of North Carolina, two T-rules for estimating wastewater flows. We've coordinated with the town and determined that there's not existing utilities on this site to deal with that additional sewer, so we will have to provide a new sanitary sewer lift station and convey the water of the sewer to the existing Town of Oak Island system. The cost of designing, permitting, and constructing, the utility improvements would be a requirement of this development, but ultimately, the lift station and the utilities would be certified, indeed and dedicated to the town, to be part of their municipal system, which is very common practice for private development projects, to ultimately turn the utilities over to the municipality to maintain.
So what you're saying, Mr. Haley, is that the 32,000 gallons of sewage will eventually belong to me and all of my people here?
I would object to that question. In the day, the town generates revenue from sewer treatment and wastewater, and it's not like the town's citizens are just taking a hit in the wallet, and so I would move to strike that question.
Mr. Eads?
Question is noted and overruled. Mr. Haley, can you answer that question?
As Mr. Richardson indicated, the wastewater generated by this project would be billed at standard municipal rates, just as any other customer on the island.
And Mr. Haley, with respect to the improvements of sewer infrastructure and wastewater that we are paying for before conveying it to the Town of Oak Island, is that a standard and customary practice by developers?
Yes, it is.
And if we didn't have a hotel there, and we built another three restaurants, would there be wastewater treatment generated from those uses of the restaurant?
Yes.
Would there be wastewater generated from a laundromat?
Yes, and depending upon the actual use... Yes, and depending upon the actual use, it could be more sewer than what we're proposing with the proposed development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Haley.
One more question, Mr. and Mr. Haley. How did you come up with 32,000 gallons coming from a laundromat?
I have not analyzed the site for anything other than the proposed use, which is a mix of restaurant and retail and hotel, and there is a document published by the state of North Carolina, and the North Carolina Administrative Codes, the Chapter 2-T, commonly known as the Two-T Rules, and it provides specific flow rates to use for given uses based on number of seats in a restaurant, number of employees working in a retail environment. So those are the uses that we're proposing, and those are the uses, and that's the document that we use to estimate 32,000 gallons per day.
And I just have one last question, because you mentioned the employees.
Microphone, please.
Oh. I'm so sorry. One more question, you were talking about the employees. Have you looked into affordable housing and how many, how much there is available for your new employees that'll be coming to the island?
No, I did not. No.
All right.
It wasn't a requirement.
It wasn't a requirement.
No, it's not a requirement.
But it's a care that you have for your employees.
Correct. Again, I'm not the developer, I'm the designer for the project.
Might want to mention that to the developer, yes.
Well, we're digressing to criteria that's not, I mean, I don't, not going to stop it right away, your point was made, I believe, or at least heard. The issue is whether the applicant can come forth with material substantial and relevant evidence to meet the criteria in the code to issue a special use permit.
Correct.
And the original objection Ms. Chauverty came up here about was some unspecified objection to our exhibits three through eight.
Correct. Ms. Chauverty?
Anything else?
Do you have any more questions?
I think I've said enough, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't believe anyone else raised their hand regarding objections to the exhibits. Objections to the exhibits? Yes, sir. You were up first, sir, I'm sorry, this gentleman in blue, my sight's bad, I believe that's blue.
I'm Roger DeBoit, and I'm here to represent the Oak Island Elks Lodge, located immediately adjacent and to the west of the planned development, and I'd just like to address two concerns. One being, we've spoken with KAMA in the past about infilling property to the north of our parking lot to provide additional parking.
On the basis of inadmissible hearsay.
And we were told that was not a possibility. So the development, as drawn as I see it, would require quite a bit of fill, is that not a fact?
I renew my objection on the basis of inadmissible hearsay.
Stop.
On the basis of inadmissible hearsay, as well as the fact that he's a lay witness and cannot give testimony about any specialized knowledge with respect to Coastal Area Management Act.
Objection is noted, is it Mr. DeBoit, am I pronouncing that correctly?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Is your, is it Mr. DeBoit?
Yes.
Am I pronouncing that? We're at, we're at a point right now where the applicant has tendered exhibits, and I'm asked, asked all those who were sworn in if they had objections to those exhibits being received into evidence. So do you have any objections? You'll get a chance to come up and testify later. Do you have any objections to the exhibits?
I do have one, but it's probably something that I need to take up with a developer.
Well, if you're going to lodge an objection to the exhibit, go ahead, sir.
Okay, so in the past few years, we've had several conversations with the property owner that still owns the property, is my understanding, and land agents, real estate agents, and we're led to believe that there was going to be a possibility for us.
Objection, listen, this is inadmissible hearsay, what a supposed conversation may have been, had occurred between Mr. DeBoit and the Elks Lodge with the owner of the property, not the applicant for tonight's project, has zero to do with tonight's proceeding, but it definitely has nothing to do with whether or not there's an objection to Exhibits Three Through Eight coming into the record.
Other than you asked me if I had an objection.
Okay.
And I don't believe it's hearsay until I've made a statement.
Wait, wait, we're not going to digress into that. Please, both of you, address your comments to either me or the council, not to each other directly, please. If you have an objection to the issuance of this permit for this project to go forward, you will have an opportunity tonight to provide testimony with respect to that. I'm talking about the paper documents that the applicant has offered into evidence. Do you have any objections to those coming into evidence?
I'm trying to explain to you, that piece of property, as it's shown on that drawing, encroaches on the piece of property that we were told we would be able to purchase.
Okay.
So that's my objection.
Thank you, sir. Objection is noted, we were giving both sides a little leeway on hearsay, so over Mr. Richardson's objection, well, we've heard Mr. DeBoit's objection, but I think that we should receive Exhibits Three Through Eight into evidence, Madam Mayor. Do you have, I'm sorry, you have objections to the exhibits? Yes, sir, come on up, I apologize. Thank you, Mr. DeBoit.
My name is Chip Frazier, I live at 706 West Dolphin, one-half mile from the intersection of Middleton Road and West Dolphin. My objection has to do with one of the exhibits, was one of.
I'm sorry, Mr. Frazier.
You have any standing questions, Mr. Richardson?
I would object, just based on what he's recited as being a half-mile away from the subject property, I don't believe that satisfies the standing requirements. He's not indicated what would be special damages above and beyond what he contends or separate and apart from the general public. I recognize that you've already allowed another lady previously, Ms., what's her name?
Ed Lexner.
Ed Lexner. So I just want to note my objection, and on the assumption that you're going to recommend overruling that objection, then I'll allow Mr. Frazier to go forward.
And you'll certainly have, you're correct in that assumption, and you will certainly have a right to ask Mr. Frazier questions. Proceed, Mr. Frazier.
Okay, I'd like a clarification, is the transportation study that Mr. Stewart referenced one of the exhibits that's going to be either accepted or denied?
That was one that has been tendered, sir, yes, sir.
Then I do have an objection, and my objection is that I suspect a good number of the people in this audience have concerns about traffic with respect to Middleton Road and East Dolphin Road, and the adjoining streets like West Dolphin where I live. Everything has been very well explained, Mr. Stewart has a, has a very impressive design project here. One element of that is the traffic study, and except for a few brief comments from Mr. Stewart to summarize the traffic study, the thing that interests the good majority of the people in this room has not been discussed. So I protest, I object to submitting the traffic study unless it's going to be explained more completely to the, to me personally.
Mr. Richardson, is Mr. Bennett here?
Mr. Bennett's here.
Okay, I just want to authenticate, if you could bring him to the lectern real quick, or to you, I suppose. Mr. Bennett, I'm going to tender to you what Mr. Richardson has marked as Exhibit Seven. Are you with that document?
Yes, sir.
Are you a licensed professional engineer in North Carolina?
Yes, sir.
Did you seal that document?
Yes, sir.
Do you have specialized training in the field of traffic analysis?
Yes, sir.
Could you just give us a brief description on that?
Traffic impact analysis is a traffic study.
No, I'm sorry, no, just your credentials.
Okay, I'm sorry. My credentials, graduated from North Carolina State University, 1990, sat for my PE in 1994, received that. I worked for the North Carolina Department of Transportation for seven years prior to moving to the city of Wilmington, and I was the city of Wilmington's traffic engineer for over 23 years.
In the course of your career, would you say you've seen over 100 traffic impact analysis?
I would not be able to give you an exact number, but it was part of my daily routine.
Would you say it's over 50?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, sir. And that is your seal?
Yes, sir.
Right. Would you like to, well, I'm going to overrule the objection, I believe that Mr. Frazier would qualify, I'm sorry, Mr. Bennett would qualify as a licensed North Carolina professional engineer, as an expert in a court of law, based not only on the fact that he is licensed, but his work experience, and for the record, Madam Mayor, and council, and members of the public, this traffic impact analysis is a sealed document, sealed by Mr. Bennett. So, Mr. Frazier, thank you, sir. Mr. Frazier, do you have any other objections?
As I understand it, if the applicant submits competent evidence, which it appears that he has, opponents have an opportunity to rebut.
Yes, sir, you do.
Opponents cannot rebut what they don't know.
And maybe I was not clear earlier, as I stated, after the applicant's finished with its case, all of those who were sworn in that have standing will have an opportunity to provide their own testimony.
Yes, sir, I understand.
I'm giving you an opportunity right now, over Mr. Richardson's objection, to cross-examine Mr. Bennett about the traffic impact analysis that's been marked as Exhibit Seven. Do you have any questions of Mr. Bennett about this traffic impact analysis?
Hand it to me, I'll read it and see.
Excuse me.
Mr. Eads, could I clarify that that's the two-page summary that was offered as exhibit and not the entire 100-plus page study?
Correct, it's a, I think they refer to it as the executive summary.
Thank you.
While Mr. Frazier is reading the document, is it okay to ask a question, Mr. Eads? Should I hold it?
My preference would be, since Mr. Frazier's already started, Madam Mayor, that he finish.
Thank you.
But as the chair of this hearing, I defer to you, but if you want my preference.
No, that's all fine, we'll continue as we are. There are seats that are becoming available as everyone shifts, if anyone would like to sit.
Do you have coffee?
I've got a whole lot of them here.
I'm really excellent, you know?
The obvious question that hasn't been asked is what is the date of the traffic study? Because if it's not at peak time, it's not as relevant.
That's true.
I don't know why no one is thinking about that, do you?
It's a good question.
It is a good question, I want to add that.
Can we, can we take a break about eight?
Yes, I want this close break.
Okay.
Pretty sure.
Yeah, nobody wants, just one, when it's convenient. I'm not in dire need, yet.
Council members are asking me for a break somewhere for some reason, if you could give us an opportunity, I just wanted to make you aware.
Can you bring us back to order?
I've been in and out of rooms, you may.
I want to bring the meeting back to order.
Mr. Frazier, you've had an opportunity to look at Exhibit Seven.
Yes, and it, as you said, it's a one-half-page paragraph, one-half-page executive summary of what I assume is a much larger document. So to protest at this point would be to protest the executive summary without knowing the underlying process used to develop this executive summary. Basically, there's nothing here that helps me establish what is considered a peak hour on Oak Island versus peak hour in a standardized study. There's nothing that really describes the trip impact with respect to Oak Island, as far as I can see from the executive summary. So at this point, I still continue to protest this summary as being inadequate evidence or proof of a, of a, an attempt to satisfy the question of whether or not public health, safety, and well-being is adequately addressed in this traffic study.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Eads, mayor, members of council, there is no requirement for a traffic impact analysis or any other traffic study of any kind under your town's ordinances. This entire discussion is not competent, it's not substantial, and it's not relevant evidence for purposes of tonight's application. My client went and voluntarily had Mr. Bennett to do a traffic study voluntarily because we suspected that this question, which isn't part of a special use permit application consideration, would come up. He has given an executive summary, he's put his seal on it, he's qualified as an expert per the town's attorney, based on his qualifications that are also behind Tab Eight of Exhibit Four of his resume and curriculum and experience. We have the extensive traffic impact analysis study, but I do not believe that is evidence that should come before the board tonight, and I don't believe this objection by Mr. Frazier has any merit whatsoever, given the fact it's not part of your requirements under the town's ordinances, and you heard that from your own planning director, Mr. Kirkland. So I would ask and reiterate that Exhibits Three Through Eight be admitted into the record as recommended by Mr. Eads before Mr. Frazier spoke.
If I may comment, Mr. Eads?
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that it was not a requirement, however you've introduced it into evidence, and I think it's only fair that it be questioned, and just as an FYI, the people that are questioning it are on the west end, and Middleton is the only access, their only egress and ingress in terms of getting off the island without going all the way down to 40th Street. So I'm asking for you to indulge our community and allow them to at least ask questions whether or not this is submitted into evidence, it is what it is, it is a sealed document. But I'm asking to have a little patience with our community because their concerns are real.
You're correct, we have tried to address the concerns as best we can, understanding that there's misinformation that's out there, which is part of the reason I was attacking the height, we saw some posts about how it was going to be 90 feet in the air, and it's not.
Understand, understand, and that's what this hearing is about.
In light of that, we'll go ahead and identify the complete traffic study by Davenport Engineering and Mr. Bennett as Exhibit Nine.
Do I have an opportunity for cross?
Is that, hold on, sir, is that sealed? Is that, hold on, sir, is that sealed?
Yes.
Thank you for understanding their concerns. Mr. Eads, is there a date that the study was done?
The sealed date, Madam Mayor, is...
No, the date the study was conducted.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Prepared on February 10, 2023, according to the front page. I have not had time to go through, it's a rather voluminous document.
And the applicant can answer?
Yes, ma'am. We go.
Mr. Bennett, do you remember the date that you did your traffic study that I'm marking as Exhibit 9 that has at the beginning the executive summary?
Yes, sir. We collected traffic data in the first week of, after the first full week with no holidays, in January. Enter protocols that are typically dictated in jurisdictions where we do have traffic counts required. Those traffic counts were adjusted by the North Carolina Department of Transportation's standard adjustment factors to represent a peak season value. Therefore, numbers in the study are adjusted to represent more of a peak season than when the values were collected.
I appreciate your answering the question.
Mr. Bennett, just so I understand, the DOT has certain standard guidelines they look at to make seasonal adjustments?
Yes, sir.
And you utilize those guidelines in performing this traffic impact analysis?
Yes, sir.
Are there any objections by anyone else who hasn't already spoken to the exhibits? Mr. Frazier?
No.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I'm... Do you have objections to the exhibit, sir? Okay. You're go... No, 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 no. If you want to speak and testify later, you have a right to do that. Madam Mayor, I'm going to recommend, given the nature of Exhibits 3 through 9, that they come into evidence noting the various objections that were lodged. And it's my understanding that we wanted to take a quick recess at 8?
Yes, if you would indulge us, if we could take a... Something short of 10 minutes, we've got a long way to go, so... But we need to take a break.
And Madam Mayor, I think I heard a question from the audience about cross-examination?
Yes.
And just for the public, if you're sworn in, have standing, you will be given the opportunity to cross those who have testified when we get back from the recess.
Yes, thank you for iterating that.
Mr. Richardson, do you have something you want? Okay. Are we in recess?
Thank you. We're going to take a break. We reconvene the meeting. I want to thank everyone for their patience. As we work through this process, it's very much appreciated. We'll have to make some audibles based on time as we move through the evening, and we'll let you know what those are when we make those determinations. But our effort is to make sure that those with standing have been, and have been sworn in, get to cross-examine the applicant tonight, if at all possible, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I, during the recess, I asked Mr. Richardson about that. They, obviously, as the applicant have a say, particularly since they have the burden of proof. I think to expedite this, or at least not make it duplicative, what we could do, and what Mr. Richardson has agreed, is that we allow those who want to come and provide testimony to ask questions in the nature of cross, in addition to their provision of testimony. In other words, we kind of combine those two things. Hopefully, we can close out the evidentiary portion of the hearing tonight, or at least recess it and come back, to the extent the board has questions of the applicant when we come back. The applicant certainly has the right to address those questions and provide evidence related to the same, so... My recommend, well, first off, Mr. Richardson, do you agree with that concept on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, please note that for the record.
Yes, sir, and also I've had a couple of questions from people who didn't get a chance to sign up to speak yet.
Because they weren't here, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, why don't we do this, why don't we go down the people that did sign up, see how long we go into the evening. If we get through that list, then we can invite those who didn't sign up to come get sworn in and go from there. Mr. Richardson, do you have any objections to that?
No.
Right. At this point, Madam Mayor, I would ask the town clerk to look in the sign-in sheet and just go straight down, top to bottom.
And, Mr. Eads, I just want to be certain. For the record, the applicant has nothing further to offer at this time in terms of the evidence in support of the special use permit application, so I think at this point it turns over to what you were talking about earlier with respect to anyone who's signed up in opposition to it.
Thank you.
Mr. Eads, point of clarification, please. Not everyone on the list has standing and has been sworn in.
Well, they have to be sworn in, then there'll have to be some questions about standing, so I don't know any other way to do it, other than take it down the list and then go to an open question to the audience.
What about the ones who stood and were sworn in? Do we take those first, before we go to a list?
Presumably, they should be on the list, and once we finish the list, we'll make that question, or...
I'll leave that to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just don't see how, there's a more orderly way to do it than that.
That's fine.
Ms. Stites?
Okay, and just, I'll note that there are some names on the list, such as Mr. Richardson and Mr. Stewart, who are with the applicant and have already spoken.
Okay.
So, going down, next, we would have Chip Frazier.
Let me clarify, there's a three-minute rule with respect to opposition?
We haven't even entered into that portion of the meeting yet.
Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, then, I'll revert to my long script. I'm Chip Frazier, I live at 706 West Dolphin Drive on Oak Island. Section 4.9.3.5 of the Oak Island Code of Ordinances requires an applicant for a special use permit to provide competent, substantial evidence to establish the facts and conditions for permit approval. Demarest Company Landscape Architects Professional Limited Liability Corporation, hereafter Demarest, did not do so when it applied for a special use permit for Boardwalk Place. Section 4.9.3.6.1 further states that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of a special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. However, Boardwalk Place would provide guest parking for almost 200 vehicles and 60 bicycles that would be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Therefore, this application should be denied. Can Mike bring up the graphics?
He's coming.
Can you bring up the graphics following this? Are we there?
That water spray off.
No, mine.
Mr. Stewart?
Okay, that's right. There we go, that's good. Okay, to support my conclusion, I offer the following observations. Broadway Place, with its additional vehicles and bicycles, will be detrimental to or endanger my safety and the public safety and general welfare, because it will increase traffic congestion at the intersections that I use daily. I live one-half mile from the intersections of South Middleton Avenue, Beach Ave, excuse me, Beach Drive, Dolphin Drive, and Pelican Drive. Turning northbound onto South Middleton Ave from West Dolphin Drive or Pelican Drive in a vehicle or trying to cross Dolphin Drive on foot or with a bicycle is dangerous in the spring, summer, and fall seasons, particularly on Saturdays from about 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. during the rental changeover period. At that time, there is heavy southbound traffic and northbound traffic on South Middleton Avenue and opposing westbound traffic on East Dolphin Drive. In addition to visitors to Oak Island beaches, this route serves over 5,200 houses between 20th Streets, northeast, southeast, and 30th Street, northwest and southwest. Exacerbating this traffic congestion is the heavy low-speed vehicle traffic in this area. The LSV-only parking lot at Middleton Beach Access is the only parking area exclusively for LSVs on Oak Island. LSVs must enter and depart that lot from East or West Beach or South Middleton Ave. Additionally, LSVs from north of Davis Canal must enter the southbound lane of South Middleton Avenue at White Lane Southwest to travel to the beach. This results in a high concentration of LSVs moving at less than 35 miles per hour, being mixed with regular vehicular traffic along that route. Safety, public health, and general welfare at this Gordian knot of traffic is further degraded throughout the year by visiting motorists and pedestrians who are unfamiliar with these hazards in season. Their confusion is compounded by frustration from traffic delays caused by the traffic light at Oak Island Drive and traffic congestion on Middleton between Maxwell Drive, St. James Gate, and Pelican Drive, Dolphin Drive, and Beach Drive. Finally, increased traffic congestion on South Middleton Avenue would impede emergency equipment responding from the Oak Island Fire Station at 101 East Oak Island Drive. It is the nearest fire station supporting 2,200 homes south of Davis Canal and west of 19th Place East, including five miles of beach. According to David W. Owens at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill Institute of Government, Gidorzy Construction versus Town of Chapel Hill, 1985, determined that the town is not required to consider future road improvements in making a decision about special use permits. Additionally, North Carolina case law, Mann versus, Mann Media versus Randolph County Planning Board, Cox versus Hancock, Howard versus City of Kinston, Gidorzy Construction versus Town of Chapel Hill, and Goforth Properties suggests that evidence to support traffic impacts should consist of traffic studies and reports that include traffic counts and their effects on traffic safety at nearby intersections, testimony from city planning staff concerning traffic control and experience with the safety of walkers and cyclists. This is case law. In the absence of competent, substantial evidence from Demarest to support its claim that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use for Boardwalk Place will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, and general welfare, the request for special use permit should be denied.
Mayor, I have questions for Mr. Frazier. Good evening, Mr. Frazier.
Hi.
Are you an engineer, sir?
No.
Have you ever been an engineer?
No.
Are you an attorney?
No.
Have you ever been an attorney?
No.
Does any of your educational background include traffic engineering and project management?
Yes.
And what is that background?
I have a master's in systems development, system design.
What does systems development and systems design, what does that mean?
It encompasses the entire panoply of options with respect to any system, a city being one system, a can opener being another.
When did you have that master's degree?
I made the, I got my master's in 1982.
But again, with respect to real-world experience, with respect to traffic studies, have you ever performed one?
No.
Have you ever been admitted in any court proceeding as an expert in traffic studies?
No.
Have you ever been admitted in any court proceedings for traffic analysis and impacts?
Short of this, no.
Did you actually perform any empirical studies with respect to traffic counts?
Yes. I don't have the data, it's anecdotal, unfortunately. If you count the number of vehicles from West Dolphin Drive back to the Maxwell Gate that I referred to earlier, it numbers somewhere on the order of 150 cars on any given Saturday between 3:00 and 5:00 o'clock.
And when did you, when did you actually count those cars?
2021.
So...
Excuse me, 2022, June of 2022.
You, and so tell me about your counting of cars that lead you to the evidence that we don't have in front of us with the data.
I was leaving my home, going down West Dolphin Drive to South Middleton, not realizing it was Saturday afternoon, and was unable to get on Middleton from West Dolphin. So, I backtracked, turned around on West Dolphin, went back to Second Street and entered, using Second Place West, entered West Beach Drive, drove back to the east to get on South Middleton. And as I went from South Middleton, I started counting cars as I moved progressively north. I lost count somewhere around 150.
Did you compare your anecdotal counting of cars with respect to the impacts that a grocery store would have on this property that's permitted as a matter of right?
No.
How about with respect to additional restaurants on this property?
No.
How about with respect to laundromats and an ABC liquor store and bars?
No. All would be roughly the same if they add one car to the traffic that's on South Middleton Avenue. The problem is not East Dolphin. The problem is the traffic on South Middleton. And when you have traffic on South Middleton in both directions, bumper to bumper, traffic on East Dolphin, you're not going to get off West Dolphin.
Did you do any comparisons of your anecdotal data that you don't have with you tonight with respect to the impacts of traffic for a trade school or vocational school on the property that's permitted as a matter of right?
It would be the same impact.
My, my question is, did you prepare any studies?
No, no, I did not.
How about with respect to banks that are committed as a matter of right, I mean permitted as a matter of right?
No.
About community centers?
No.
How about indoor athletic and exercise facilities?
No.
Excuse me, this is a legal process. Please provide respect for those participating in this process, irregardless of, or regardless, I should say, of whether or not you like the testimony or the questions being provided. Please.
How about with respect to furniture stores that are permitted as a matter of right on the property? I have no further questions of Mr. Frazier at this time, and I would note for the record that Mr. Frazier's testimony is that of a lay witness in violation of 4.11.1.3.2, where he's trying to testify, even though he's not an expert, that the, with respect to increases in vehicular traffic resulting from a proposed development and how it would pose a danger to the public safety. And there's no information that he's offered up in terms of data that can be compared or analyzed with respect to tonight's proceeding.
Objection noted, Mr. Richardson. Ms. Stites?
Ms. Stites?
Kelly Jermaine?
Good evening. Kelly Jermaine, 6610 Kings Lynn Drive, yes, all the way down on the West End. There's lots of talk about projects being compatible with the land use plan.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Eads, I would object on the basis of, at this point, the lack of standing by Ms. Jermaine with respect to her property location.
It's Madam Mayor. I know that was an accident. Uh, Ms. Jermaine, um...
Yes?
You just testified that you live on the West End?
Yes.
Do you contend that you are, if this permit is issued, that you will suffer special damages? And by special damages, I mean those that are distinct from any alleged damages that would be suffered by the community at large.
I'm not sure how to interpret that, to tell you the truth. I'm actually here because I chaired the comprehensive plan for two years with 14 other citizen team, and everyone keeps on saying things are compatible for that land, against that land use plan. I want to differ with that because there are certain aspects that have been forgotten from that, this CAMA, this land use plan.
I would renew my objection because she's not offered any evidence as to what her alleged special damages are for purposes of satisfying standing.
Do you contend you'll suffer damages if this permit's issued?
I think all of us on the West End will, yes.
Do you contend that, when you say "all of us," that there's anything peculiar or particular, uh, as it relates to you, that would be damages suffered distinct from the damages you contend?
Trying to access off the, where I live, on Kings Lynn down to Middleton, to go anywhere for any type of errand shopping, or just whatever I might have to do, because that is the only way for me to get off the island.
Hey, Ms. Jermaine, I'm gonna, um, suggest Madam Chair overrule the objection with the understanding that under North Carolina law, to have standing, you have to show or contend that you will suffer special damages. Ms. Jermaine, I would ask you to keep any testimony about traffic, uh, limited to your personal experience and observations.
Sure, okay. That's fine. All right. May I proceed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to remind some important aspects about our plan that are relative to this project. The plan said, "Keep residential zoning intact at Middleton intersections." Also said, "Balance needs of new development and existing neighborhoods. Parking that reduces impervious surfaces. Limit impervious coverage for new developments to mitigate storm runoff." We all know that's been unsuccessful. "Regulate location of development in ocean hazard areas. Support reasonable managed residential growth. Commercial buildings consistent with small-town atmosphere." That would be including in size and modest lighting. Now, this is a quote, "Town strongly encourages overall land use and development patterns that support retention of the Oak Island small-town character, its existing quality of development, and its family atmosphere." The number-one goal is, "In all decisions, actions, Oak Island will address the impact on its quality of life and maintenance of a family beach atmosphere." This plan was approved by the state in 2017, and was not, one word was changed. And has been basically the guiding light for our standards that now were developed in the UDL, the special limit use standards. And I just want to mention that some of these, yes, they met, they will be met, but I, I contest that they will not be maintained. Specifically, it will be detrimental to endanger the public health and safety and general welfare. Accessing the beach will not be orderly and safe, just the sheer volume of people. The project will not be in harmony with the area that has residential zoning with surrounding single-family homes. It will not minimize traffic. I'll forget that because you don't want me to do that. Public access with additional parking spaces are compact designated. How many of those have you seen around the island, compacts? It will not improve the value of adjoining properties. How can 106 hotel rooms do that? Each of these statements I have, I have the number of the item next to it that it addresses in the standard. And I also want to remind everyone that we have four other motels that are easily accessible to the beach. 106 hotel room complex in a residential area near a major beach intersection, I didn't say traffic, does not conform at all. As a town, we have not been faithful to a lot of the land use objectives. Let's not further dismantle what we, what we have left of Oak Island, where you love. Thank you. I have this, I have this to share.
Mr. Richardson, cross.
Mr. Eads? Can I go ahead and pass this down, give this to you?
Will you hand that to Mr. Richardson first, and Mr. Richardson, tell me if you have any objections?
Is, there's 10 of them? Yeah, yeah, one, you can have one.
Now, do you have any objections? Are you offering that in?
I'm offering, I have copies for everyone, if they want, of what I just said, with the numbers of the standards attached to them.
Please make sure that the clerk gets a copy.
Well, we gotta see if he had any objections.
You can always send one through the email.
Got it.
To Lisa.
I'm sorry, Ms. Eads.
No, I was saying, just like we did earlier with Mr. Frazier with exhibit, I believe it was six or seven, the TIA executive summary, I'm gonna give the applicant opportunity to look at this proposed exhibit.
Yes, yes, yes.
Get a copy.
There's a backside to it also.
If it's okay, um, I'm going to ask some questions before I weigh in on this because I don't believe she's competent to give this testimony. Ms. Jermaine, good evening. So, how long have you lived at Oak Island, where you live now?
Own property for 30 years, and I've been here 22, where I am. 23.
Okay, so roughly back to 2000.
We bought the property in 95.
But you've been on it.
2001.
Okay.
Full-time.
You familiar with what used to exist, the Driftwood Motel?
Yes, the one that they ended up taking down over in Yopon.
And that had 16 rooms, and that's no longer?
I understand, you said that there were 17, sir.
There's no longer Driftwood Motel, correct?
Yes.
And do you remember Blue Water Point?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
With the asbestos, yes, that was right down the street.
Okay, and that had 28 hotel rooms, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
Okay.
Well, I have to, that was for the record, just making sure you're saying yes.
Yes.
I'm not trying to be rude, just...
No, I understand, and I'm not trying to be either.
Stop here.
It's been a very long night for all of us.
I understand. Um, so, there's no longer those 28 rooms, correct?
I understand.
Correct?
Yeah, I, yes.
Okay, and they're...
Are you gonna say the ones that we do have, though?
There used to exist the Ocean Crest Hotel, correct?
It still is there.
Okay, is it, is it operational?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Excuse me. Thank you.
How about the Southwind Hotel?
Southwind Hotel?
Yes, ma'am.
What, where location?
On the beach, on Oak Island, Yopon Beach. You've never heard of it?
Yopon Beach, that's, okay, that was, that is the beach house now.
Do 33 hotel rooms exist there?
They're renovating right now.
Do they exist right now? Are they, are they operational?
They will be in, for tourist season.
Are you an engineer?
I don't think that's necessary.
Are you an engineer?
No.
Have you ever been employed in the field of traffic engineering?
I didn't, I wasn't related to traffic, so that's not relevant.
Just asking questions, I just need you to answer.
No.
Okay. Have you ever been?
But they're not relevant questions.
Do you have any experience in project management that deals with traffic studies?
I was instructed not to talk about traffic, so why are you asking me about traffic?
The sheet of paper that you're handing out mentions traffic, correct?
Only as the standard that you're supposed to meet. And I did not read that over the microphone because I was instructed not to.
Okay, so it does include traffic that you're wishing to move into the evidentiary record, correct?
Because that's what you're saying you can do.
Are you an appraiser?
No.
Have you ever had any experience appraising property?
No. Nor do I want to.
Have you ever served in law enforcement for public health, safety, or general welfare?
No. Well, maybe you have, education might be general welfare.
Do you have any experience in stormwater runoff? Do you have any experience in calculating pervious versus impervious surface coverage?
Only as, as it applied to the land use plan. And the studies that were included in the land use plan.
And I believe you said you chaired, uh, the committee regarding the comprehensive plan?
Yes, the development of it.
When was that?
It was two years' worth, and we finally completed it in 2017.
So you were the chair for those two years?
Yes, I was.
And the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2017?
By the state.
Do you believe that the zoning ordinance can be set aside by the comprehensive plan?
The zoning ordinance is supposed to be, have been evolved from the comprehensive plan, and they're in the process of being revised continually because it's very hard to have lawyer-e's in UDOs.
Do you understand the zoning district for this property?
Yes, it's CB, yeah, it's commercial or business. I mean, it can be, and right now where the Long Beach Pier was, that was also CB, and we now have a lot of houses, single-family houses there. So they're eligible for this area as well.
Do you contend that this property's part of an ocean hazard area?
Yeah, if you were here during the hurricane with the storm surge, trust me.
Well, does it have an ocean hazard designation on it?
All of our beach does, and the hazard mitigation is down on the far west, which all of us have to be able to exit and get off the island.
Does this property have an ocean hazard designation?
In the general area.
But does it have a specific ocean hazard?
It's an AE zone.
AE?
Mm-hmm.
Not ocean hazard?
Not BE.
Not ocean hazard?
Right, well, AE is also because you have to have...
Areas, areas of environmental concern, but not ocean hazard, correct?
Okay.
Yes?
Yeah, terminology.
Okay.
It's a legal concept.
Okay, thank you. AE still has a lot of potential.
How does this project not support development of a town center, which you've mentioned in this?
I didn't say that one. I know, it's on there, but I didn't say that because it's not a town center, we're not gonna have a town centered over on East Dolphin. The CAM, the, the land use plan emphasized a town center on Oak Island Drive.
How does this project for a hotel differ any than having an ABC liquor store?
The number of people that will be in and out.
Let me finish, I wasn't finished. How does it differ with your overall concerns about harmony if we had put in or asked to put in, as a matter of right, bars, an ABC liquor store, a laundromat, and a grocery store?
The simple volume of people at any one time would not have been the same.
And do you have any firsthand experience that you can draw upon to support that statement?
Well, if you're gonna rent 106 rooms, that's, that's, I mean, I would hope you don't want to have them vacant.
Do you have any specialized training in the fields of?
No, just, just, just logic that it's 106 rooms.
I tell you what, let's, let's, on both sides, the question be completely asked, and then the answer be completely answered.
Okay, sorry.
And again...
I apologize.
No, it's okay, Ms. Jermaine, it's just, this is not like a normal conversation, we have to have a record if this goes to the Superior Court. And as Mr. Richardson pointed out earlier too, uh-huh's and uh-uh's, I know what you mean, everyone in this room knows what you mean, but that's why we need yes or no's, and you're doing a great job of that now, so, thank you.
So, just so we finish this up, do you have any specialized training in understanding anything about appraised values? Do you have any specialized training or work experience to support any statements regarding value of adjoining properties and its impact with this project?
Only in the aspect of, I have had, I've seen a number of our friends and relatives and neighbors try to sell their homes, and they try to get the comps, and the comps would probably reflect poorly of having a hotel near.
I'm asking about your...
But I do, I am not, I am not, do not have an expertise in that, no.
And do you have any expertise in, um, from an expert standpoint, addressing harmony with this project with the surrounding areas?
Except that I live here for as many years as I have.
Can you point to anything in this application that doesn't meet the technical specifications and requirements for a special use permit application?
I didn't contest.
So your answer is...
I mean, it's, it's, yeah, it's all on paper. And I have to say, very honestly, the illustrations that were given was lovely, but they're only exhibits and drawings. Whether or not it comes to fruition, that it's gonna really, really look like that, I'm, there's no guarantee, because I just know some of the other concepts that have been passed on the, in this town that have not looked like the submission that they were given.
If the applicant were to stipulate that that is what the project will look like, does that change your opinion in any way?
Not because of the volume of people, no. No, sir.
And so, going back to the first question I was asking before that last one, is there anything in the application materials that you can point to that's in violation of the zoning code of ordinances for the town of Oak Island?
Not at this time.
No further questions, and I don't...
Well, let me, let me add one thing. The fact that it does not, does, it is not compatible with our land use plan, and that is in the statement of submission, that it's compatible with it.
I do not believe that Ms. Jermaine's exhibit should be received into evidence because it's based on lay testimony that's not qualified under your zoning ordinance for quasi-judicial hearings, and there's also multiple aspects of it that she's saying that she is not advancing before counsel tonight in opposition to the special use permit. And for you to see things that she's not arguing would be incompetent and would lead to confusion of the issues.
Ms. Eads?
Thank you. Mr. Richardson and Madam Mayor, Ms. Jermaine, a few quick questions. In your work on the land use plan, how many hours, could you quantify how many hours you put into working on that plan?
You wanna try to quantify that?
For the record, you're holding up what?
I'm holding up the land use plan.
Okay.
The approved land use plan.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, can, can you give me a ballpark?
For two years, every few weeks, hours and hours, here, sitting here at the podium?
Yes, ma'am. And during, during that timeframe, um, did you often have outside, or did outside consultants or...
We were directed...
Let me finish my...
Okay.
Or in-house planners come in and assist?
That was the time when Josh Crook left, and then Jake came on as a temporary from the governors, and he was here part, part of the time. But we did have also a forum in Wilmington that worked with us.
Okay.
And I do not recall offhand the name. But it's in, it's in the plan.
I was... Counsel of government, ring a bell as far as Jake goes?
Pardon?
You said the governors, but does the counsel of government ring a bell as far as Mr. Vares?
Yes, yes, he was temporarily working for that, and then after we were done with the plan, he actually applied to the town for the planning job.
Thank you, Ms. Jermaine. Madam Mayor, um, whether we like it or not, we are governed by the law of the state of North Carolina. In particular, with respect to expert opinions, uh, the courts have consistently held to give a value, property value, opinion, you have to have, um, specialized knowledge or training in that area. And the same is true with respect to the effect of traffic, what it will or will not do, and whether the traffic poses a danger to the public. And I'm reading from the book... And I'm reading from the book put out by the School of Government, it's the quasi-judicial hearing bible, as far as I'm concerned. So acknowledging Mr. Richardson's objection to Ms. Remain's document, with the admonition that anything on here related to a specialized area where she does not have specialized training should not be considered as expert testimony, I'm recommending we accept Ms. Remain's document as Exhibit 10 into evidence.
Mr. Eads, if I may answer the question, I had the opportunity to do a little map. I served on the land use committee, and a conservative estimate would be approximately 450 hours, not to mention the other duties of the chairperson. Ms. Remain is an outstanding citizen and civic leader, and, sir, your questions to disqualify her as an expert may be pertinent. Please don't go any further than that.
My questions weren't to disqualify her.
No, I'm talking about counsel's question, not yours, sir.
Oh, I, I believe that her experience working on the land use plan would put her in a position where a court could qualify her as an expert on land use plans. That was my point in my question.
Fair enough.
I'm trying to, I'm just trying to ask questions, I'm trying to be respectful, and I understand it's a tough job. I'm not trying to offend anyone, I'm just trying to make sure that this proceeding, on behalf of my client, is just following due process, that's all. I don't have an ill will towards anyone here.
Thank you for that. Am I done?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right.
Stites?
Uh, yes, sir. Joe Stanton?
Joe Stanton?
Please, Governor.
Ms. Remain, can you make sure, as they come up, that each of them have been sworn in?
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure that we don't get further down the list and someone wasn't qualified.
Mr. Stanton, were you sworn in earlier, sir?
Yeah, I was also sworn in too. Joe Stanton, 110 East Beach. I've owned property here since 1963. When I bought that property was wetlands.
Mr. Stanton, I need to ask you a few questions to see, or help the board determine whether you have standing. And again, this is not a Brian Eads rule, it's a rule of the state of North Carolina. Can you tell me whether you contend that you're going to suffer special damages if this permit is issued?
Noise is one thing. I'd rather see a liquor store there than, they close at nine o'clock at night.
How far is, how far is your property from the subject property, sir?
Across the road. I'm in front of the Hops Lodge.
Okay. All right, I believe that's close enough proximity, Madam Mayor.
Do what?
I believe that that's close enough proximity for him to have standing to provide testimony.
I would agree.
Go ahead, Mr. Stanton.
When I bought my property, that was wetlands. In 1970, early 70s, in the winter, when nobody was down here, I heard that they were going to make it commercial. I went to the meeting. I was the only one in there that even said anything and objected to it. Mail was Warren Callaway. The other three people in there were real estate people that were pushing it. One of them was Red Farrell. He's wanted to own the property at the time. They passed it. Then they found out they couldn't build anything on it because it was wetlands, it wouldn't perk. Red Farrell got Kenny McLean. I talked to him the other day. Come in there and put over a thousand loads of dirt to raise that up a foot and a half to two feet. It still won't perk. And they want to put in 106 rooms. Actually, it's not but nine or 10 building lots in that property. And 110 rooms is like 20 five-room houses with less sewage. Have you been by in the summer, Middleton and Oak Island Drive, and took a deep, deep smell, and they want to add 32,000 more gallons of sewage to a pumping station, that it really isn't working very well? At no time have they come and asked or said anything about the property across from where they are. It is not commercial, it is residential. And most of that property on, on my block has been owned by the same people and same families for at least 50 years. I've owned mine 60. And nobody on that block wants to see it done. And they're not here because some of them are not able to come, some of them are out of town, and some of them in really bad health, as I am. And I just don't want to see a piece of property ruined. I wouldn't mind seeing houses in there, but not a motel where you're going to have parties, loud noises, and a lot of bars. I've yet seen, seen a bar that wasn't loud. All right. Any questions?
Mr. Richardson?
Are you any kind of engineer in noise?
Excuse me, but he has a legal right to represent his client, so please.
My understanding is, your, your main concern, I'm trying to sum up your concerns, noise, yes?
That's one of them.
Okay. Do you have any engineering experience with measuring noise sounds for purposes of a noise ordinance?
No.
Are you aware that?
I'm about deaf myself.
Are you, okay. Other than the noise concerns, what are your other concerns with the project?
I think it's going to lower the value of the property.
Are you an appraiser?
Not a property appraiser, no.
What are your other concerns?
Well, I've seen a lot of things done that ended up not looking anything like the plans presented.
So your concern would be that these plans that you've seen tonight would not be?
They can change, they're just on more or less pencil, they're on paper.
So if?
When it gets building, things change.
Okay, fair enough. If the applicant stipulates that this project will look like you saw tonight, does that address your concern there?
The project can be sold and things change.
I understand that, but if this applicant stipulates that that, what you saw tonight will be built, whether by this applicant or any successors, does that address your concerns?
No, not really.
Why not?
I don't know, I hadn't had time to think about it. I'm 86 years old, my mind don't work like it used to.
You seem pretty sharp to me. That's all the questions I've got. Mr. Blanton?
Thank you, Mr. Blanton, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Roger DeRoyt?
I believe he spoke earlier, Mr. DeRoyt, is that? Is it DeBoit, Lisa?
I think it's DeRoyt. DeRoyt. I don't see him here.
Roger DePue, is that it?
Is that it?
Yeah.
DePue, oh, I apologize.
I don't think he's here.
He's not here?
Still here.
Okay. Jennifer Bates?
Out of them left.
Lieutenant, would you please do me the favor of letting the people in the lobby know there are seats inside?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
There was no Jennifer Bates? Nope, okay. Janice Flexner, do, do you have more comments?
Thank you.
Again, I am Janine Flexner, 1730 West Pelican Drive. I'm going to date myself, but I've been coming to Oak Island for 63 years. And my granddaddy, he probably knows, the other gentleman, because he came and he built the year after Hazel. So we've been here a long time. Every time, I'm a military brat, so every time we were in the country, we spent every single summer here. This is my home. And the reason my grandparents chose this place, because it was family-oriented. And if this hotel comes in, this is not going to be family, because the traffic is going to knock down all the pedestrians trying to get to the wonderful beaches that we have. I talked about the traffic on the west end, how this is the only way I can get off the island. It's serious. I would like to ask a question, since the attorney keeps asking us questions, and believe me, I'm used to legalese at home. But have you seen the traffic on July 4th on Middleton? Because that's what you need to see. And I think every single person from Broad, Boardwalk needs to see that before they can even attempt to put a property this size here. That's all I have to say, but I say, thank you to everybody for coming out. Any questions?
Hey, Ms. Flexner, again.
Hi.
I'll try to be brief. Do you have any educational experience in traffic engineering?
No, but I've seen it for my own eyes.
Do you have any experience in project management that, that addresses traffic impact analyses and studies?
No, I have an MBA, but it's not in traffic.
Do you believe that bars are family-oriented?
No, I don't, but I think I agree with the other gentleman.
Do you believe that ABC liquor stores are family-oriented?
No, but they probably started a few families.
Move on past that one.
We needed that one.
Did you yourself do any traffic studies of what you believe this project will generate?
The only studies with my own eyes and my waiting time to get through a Middleton intersection, up to 20 minutes at a time.
Are you an engineer?
No.
Have you got any experience in law enforcement pertaining to public safety?
No, I do not.
Are you an appraiser? I already asked you this, are you an appraiser?
No.
I don't have any further questions. Thank you, Ms. Flexner.
I do have one other comment. I know that, that he's a developer in Wilmington. Have you looked at Wilmington traffic lately? Because it's out of control.
With all due respect, I defer my comments because I would not feel qualified and do not have any of those expertise and I don't have legal representation, so I wait my other comments prior to making a call.
Thank you.
Just as a reminder, Mayor and Counsel, any comments about this application in the general public comments portion of this or any other meeting are legally not to be considered when weighing the merits of this application, only the evidence that comes in during the, the hearing under sworn testimony.
Thank you.
Ms. Stites?
I apologize, I'm, I'm having some trouble reading the next name, it's just one name written down, maybe Humphrey or? Nope, okay. Wendy Callaway? Bob Chulo?
Bob Chulo, C-I-U-L-L-O. I live at 163 Northeast 3rd Street, approximately one-half mile from this property.
Madam Mayor, I believe that's close enough to find standing. Go ahead, Mr.? Is it Chulo? Am I saying that?
Chulo. Chulo.
Chulo.
C-H-E-W-L-O-W, phonetically.
Yes, sir. Proceed, Mr. Chulo.
Okay. So, special damages. So, my wife and I walk the two cutest dogs on the island every morning, two mini golden doodles, every day, and some of you may have seen us, every day. And we pass the vacuum station at Middleton and Oak Island, and five out of the seven days, our dogs and the fire department is kind enough to put out water for the dogs, and five out of seven days during the summer, we can't even stop to give water to the dogs because of the smell. So let's add 32,000 gallons and pump it into a vacuum station which is already overtaxed in the summer, and let's see what kind of a result is going to come from that. Number one. Number two, I am not, I do not have any experience as a appraiser, as an attorney. I have worked in mergers and acquisitions for most of my career in financial services. But one question I would like to ask is about harmony. And I would like, gentlemen, if we could, to define, what is harmony? I look at the beautiful pictures that are up there, and does a beautiful picture define what harmony with the neighborhood is? You've got a big project, and that big project is 6,000, I'm sorry, that big project is 16 times the average residential lot of Oak Island. Our average lot is .15 acres, and they're going to develop 2.5 acres. So I question whether harmony simply is nice architectural drawings, or does it really fit into the culture of that neigh, of the neighborhood? And I'm here to tell you, heck no, it does not, in no way. Of the seven reasons that the council should consider, you mentioned four in the first part of the presentation, one is public need. I question whether there is a public need for hotel rooms on the island. We have thousands, thousands of homes that are available for rent. We have hotels on-island and off-island. You look at BRBO or Airbnb, and both of those will tell you they've got thousands of homes, from single-family homes, multiple-family homes, out on the west end, that's another issue, to just a single room in somebody's house. So the thought that we need another hotel and to put a hotel here as opposed to on the other side of the bridge? and to put a hotel here as opposed to on the other side of the bridge, let's put it on 211 Long Beach Road, and that seems to be where we're putting hotels, well, we're gonna put a hotel right in the middle, right smack in the middle of our neighborhood, and that is wrong, it is not in harmony with what we are doing as an island here, that's for sure. I do not support the special use permit and its current firm. Many adjustments are needed, and the number of rooms needs to be significantly reduced. Those pictures, boy oh boy, they were pretty. And you know what, you cut that down to a much smaller amount of rooms, maybe it would work. Maybe it would work. But a hundred and six rooms, it's not gonna work. It's not harmonious with this island. And only at that point could it become a harmonious part of Oak Island landscape and create a valued property which the residents of Oak Island can support and get behind. This special use permit request should be rejected, and many adjustments should be demanded for resubmission and review. Those are my comments. Question?
Yes, sir. Gonna try not to butcher your last name, Mr. Chulo?
Chulo, yes.
Okay.
But you can call me Bob, if you like. Everybody gets that right.
So as I understand it, your concerns that you've testified about are that you believe the smell and odor of wastewater treatment from this, that already exists, will be worse. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you have any experience in public utilities?
Just what we can smell.
But you've never worked in a sewage treatment plant?
No, sir. No, sir.
And you've already said you're not an appraiser, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you're not an attorney, correct?
That's correct.
You said earlier that one of the requirements is that there has to be a public necessity for this?
No, public need, I did not say it has to be, I said there's a seven considerations. My understanding from the school of government, there are seven considerations. Four were shown at the beginning of the presentation, and I believe our attorney, the Oak Island attorney, mentioned there were some additional ones.
But you contend that the town of Oak Island requires a public need component to the special use permit application?
I'm not saying they require it, I'm saying that should be taken into consideration. There are seven areas which should be taken into consideration for any special needs permit in the state of North Carolina.
It's not a special needs permit that we're here about tonight, it's a special use permit.
Special needs, my bad, special use.
So my question is, do you contend that the town of Oak Island's zoning ordinance has a requirement of, not a requirement, a showing of a public need for a private project?
I'm not aware, I believe that can be something that can be taken into consideration.
But you can't point to anything in the town of Oak Island's ordinance for that, correct?
That's correct.
And when you say that this project, or the land mass is sixteen times the average residential lot, you understand that this property is not zoned residential?
Of course I do.
Okay. And you're aware of all the other various uses that can go on this property without a hearing that we're having tonight, such as a grocery store?
Yes.
Okay. A bar, or bars?
Correct.
Plural?
Yes.
An ABC liquor store?
Yes, actually, they're putting one in on Seventy-Ninth Street, but that's another story.
I don't have any further questions of Mr. Chulo.
But the question I asked, if it can be answered, is about harmony. Is that something, is that a fair question to ask and hopefully get a response to?
I don't think-
Testimony, but we'll have, we do have our appraiser-
We can bring in an architect.
We have our MAI appraiser here, who's offered as part of the record, has given his opinion of value, we've also got our architect here, and we've got a landscape architect, all of which will testify and have put in the record that this, that this project is very harmonious with the surrounding areas, which is adjacent to two pending, present, active commercial properties on each side of it.
I'm a member of the Elks, I know that.
You're a member of the Elks Lodge?
I am.
And isn't it true that the Elks Lodge actually tried to buy some or all of this property?
I am not aware of that.
No further questions?
Mr. Chulo, I did say, and the applicant agreed, that in addition to providing testimony, if you wanted to cross-examine someone who's already testified, you can-
I would like that.
Okay, who would you like?
I would like to, this very eloquent gentleman concerning harmony. Again, is it visual harmony with respect to the architectural beauty? How does that, is this project potentially harmonious with all the buildings, all the beautiful residences around them? That's an answer that I would love to get, and I imagine everybody else would love to get that as well.
For the record, you're appointing Mr. Scott Stewart, the first one to testify for the applicant.
That would be a great start, yes, yes, sir.
Mr. Chulo, if you would ask Mr. Stewart your questions, again, don't talk over each other, please. Answer with yeses and nos, not uh-huh's and uh-huh's. And I don't know how much distance they wanted from the two mics, but I think they were getting some feedback earlier, but go ahead, sir.
The question is about harmony. So when you think about, and you know, given your education, your schooling and your experience, I mean, you're certainly an expert in this area. But when you think about harmony, can you kind of define, if you could, for me? But define harmony, what does that mean to you? And how are we to believe that this project would be harmonious with our island?
Stated in the narrative that has been written for this project, but when I started my presentation, there was a slide of architectural elements that we borrowed from other buildings in the area to implement onto the elevations of this, of Boardwalk Place. So from the skin of the building, elevations of the buildings, we're being harmonious with the architectural and streetscape of the area. I mean, the area is zone CB, we can't build single-family homes there. It's against the rules. So, we have to do our best to blend the architectural elements, and you know how some hotels are built in the area, and I can give you several examples that I've driven through, but they're not gonna look anything like this hotel that we are building. And, yes, these drawings were generated, not as a pretty picture, but they're from drawings that were generated from a team of consultants that we've already done, a lot of what's called the DD, the design development of the drawings. These aren't just rendering somebody came up with, we had to do a CAD drawing, we had to design the floor plans, we had to design the elevations, we had to do the engineering, we had to do the stormwater. So, we've gotten to this point, we're ready to, after an approval, to go to you know, construction documents for building permits. So, the harmonious element of this is that we're blending as best as we can into the architectural components of the streetscape in a CB district. And, you know, that was drawing, you know, thirteen that I showed. Good show.
So, in addition to what Mr. Stewart has already talked about tonight, I would offer up Mr. Loudermilk, who's the architect with the schematic drawings that we've already talked about today, to talk about the architectural harmony. So while he's gonna bring this up, Mr. Loudermilk, Mr. Chulo has a question about harmony. And as an architect, talk about, if you will, harmony and how you've artistically rendered these drawings tonight to blend in with the neighborhood. And with respect to picture thirteen of exhibit three, the pictures that were taken of the surrounding residential homes.
Grady, could you get Mr. spell his last name for us?
L.O.U.D.E.R.M.I.L.K. Just like it sounds.
What was the L.O.U.?
D.E.R.
Thank you, sir.
M.I.L.K. That's German, if you were wondering.
I know that your credentials and your CV, Curriculum vitae, is already attached as part of exhibit four, behind tab four. But just kind of give counsel and Mr. Chulo and everyone here an overview briefly of your experience in architecture?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Richardson. I went to University of Tennessee, Go Vols, and I graduated in ninety-four. And so I've been doing this work for almost thirty years. I've worked for several different firms, but I've been working for my own firm for the past few years. And, very important value that we strive to convey in our projects is harmony. And, we try to create places for people, not for quote-unquote developers, or you know, people that are just wanting to earn money off of buildings. We're trying to create places for people to live and to live within a community in harmony. We're also, as Mr. Stewart mentioned, we're trying to create several uses on this property that complement each other, the hotel with the retail. And, I know, I've heard a lot of people saying things about family, I mean, this is a family hotel, if you ask me. I can see family coming here, staying with their kids, playing in the pool, going to eat at the restaurant, shopping in the stores, without ever getting in their car. And they can walk to the beach two blocks away. So, I think the scale of this project, yes, is large. Just because of the zoning would allow it, it could be massive already. We're doing the very best that we can to blend in with the surrounding community. It's not single-family homes, so we're trying our best to mirror the architecture in the area. And we're trying to also put all the noisy areas on the inside so that the buildings that surround the noisy areas will screen all that noise and activity in the evening for the island. So I would say that that's one of our main goals, is to create harmony with, given the zoning and the use, with what we're given, and fit in with the neighborhood the very best that we can, it's the top of our priority list.
With respect to the renderings, one of which we see here is picture sixteen, did you take that architectural rendering from the pictures in picture thirteen of surrounding existing residential homes?
Yes, absolutely.
With respect to the lighting, is the lighting all as downward, roller cap lighting, low intensity?
Absolutely.
And are you guys going above and beyond the landscaping and buffering requirements for this project?
Absolutely.
Seeing Mark stand up here next to me is pretty exciting, because we've been together about twenty years. And harmony, it's one thing that when I approached Mark on this project, just like every other team member, I asked them, can they go along with my philosophy of developing? One is, respect the view, don't become the view. Ask permission, not forgiveness. And it's a privilege, not a right, to develop land. And I think we achieved that goal with this project. It's not a Publix that was built on, was it Oak Street and Pelican Street? Where you have, you know, loading area facing the rears of single-family homes. You have a VFW there, just like the Elks. But the pattern in the skin of the building, and the parking lot that's over there at the Publix, is the same size as our parking lot, but we're hiding it. And I'm sure, you know, I've sat, leave, part of this career, I've done plenty of UDOs, Unified Development Plans, plenty of comprehensive plans. It takes a lot of time, so the accolades to the work that was volunteered and created that was terrific. But it was adopted in two thousand seventeen. But the pattern of the Publix, which is in CRZ Zone, next to R7, which is single-family, and R6 and R7, that's the result of the comprehensive plan. This, we're hoping, as our team, is gonna become an example of what should be done, and how much investment and time and energy to analyze the property and figure it out, so if somebody says to us, well, Scott, we don't believe your renderings, I said, it's not gonna be built that way. Oh, yes it will, because we'll make these drawings a condition of this approval, to make sure it does happen. Because otherwise, I'm wasting forty-five years of my career.
Mr. Chulo, did you have any other questions for Mr. Loudermilk or Mr. Stewart? And I have one more witness to bring up.
I'm gonna go back again to harmony. I would submit that harmony is much more than being visually appealing. Harmony, to me, is how well it fits into the fabric of the neighborhood, and the fabric of the surrounding homes. And I would submit to you that a hundred and six-room hotel, as beautiful as it is, and hats off to you, it really is gorgeous, but a hundred and six-room hotel is not harmonious and does not fit into the fabric of the adjacent homes.
Mr. Morgan, will you come forward? For the record, I'm calling Cal Morgan, who is behind tab six of exhibit four from the applicant with his professional qualifications. Mr. Morgan, did you look at this project from the standpoint of whether or not it would have a significant detrimental impact on the value of surrounding properties?
Yes, sir, I did.
And did you issue a letter dated February eighth, twenty-twenty-three, that is exhibit six in the town of Oak Island's Town Council materials tonight?
Yes.
And in looking at this project, Mr. Morgan, first of all, have you ever given testimony as an expert?
Yes.
Give us just kind of a snapshot, even though it's already in exhibit four, a snapshot of your training, education, and experience in that respect?
I'm a certified general North Carolina appraiser in North Carolina and South Carolina. I hold the MAI designation, which is a commercial real estate appraisal designation awarded by the Appraisal Institute, as well as the SRA designation, which is a residential appraisal designation. Testified at US Bankruptcy Court, Superior Court, North Carolina Property Tax Commission, several SUP hearings.
Okay. Yeah. I've got your letter, do you have your letter in front of you?
I do.
All right, so just going down the four matters here with your analysis, the first thing you did was look at Oak Island for properties that would be similar to this proposed project, is that right?
Correct.
And did you do that?
Yes.
And then the second step, did you research those properties to determine if there were any sales of single-family residential properties that were adjacent to those similar properties like this tract?
I did.
And did you find several?
I did.
And did you, from, did you find the sales and the details of those sales?
Yes.
Okay. And did you review those sales data?
Yes.
Okay, number three, in identifying and researching the sales of single-family residential properties with similar characteristics to those identified with item two, that you said there was an exception, that they were not located adjacent to the identified commercial properties, is that right?
Yes.
What are you saying there?
So basically, you go identify a commercial property on the island, in this case, we've been talking about Publix, we'll use that. So, we've identified a commercial zoned property, the Public Shopping Center. So what I do then is I go find single-family homes that are adjacent to that property, that commercial property. You have to find them that sell, they have to be recent comps, and we'll call that property A, so we find property A, it's adjacent to the Public Shopping Center, and it sells. So then we go find a similar property, property similar size, similar bedrooms. You try to find the most similar property you can, and always accept that it is not adjacent to the Publix. Once you identify that, then you you take property A, the one that's adjacent to the commercial, and say it sells for three hundred dollars a foot. And you compare it to the one down the street that's not adjacent to the commercial property, and say it sells for more or less or the same. And that's called appraisal lingo, that's called a paired sales analysis. So you look at the two properties, you compare them, and you determine if there's a difference. Well, one of those pairings doesn't tell you much. So you have to go do it numerous times, and you go to the Food Lion Shopping Center, you go to some condo projects. You just, you go to as many commercial properties as you can that you think would have the same, a comparable impact as to what's being proposed here. So I did that with about nine or ten properties on the island. And based on all the information I found, it's my opinion that this project would certainly not have a negative impact on the adjacent properties or those properties around it. If anything, it's my personal opinion, over time, this project would probably enhance the value of the properties that are nearby.
And another way of saying that is, your opinion on this, following the law that governs this special use permit proceeding tonight, is that the- this special use permit proceeding tonight, is that the proposed project will not substantially injure the value of adjoining properties. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And with respect to the harmony, would you expect a conclusion to be different if this project was not something being built in harmony with the surrounding areas?
I'm sorry, ask that again?
Would you, if this project was one that was going to be such an inconsistent, non-harmonious use, would you expect that to have a detrimental impact on the value of the properties based on your comps that you looked at, like Food Lion or Publix?
So this, I don't know if I understand your question.
Sorry.
This is less impactful to, from a value standpoint, to the properties that are around it, primarily the single-family residential properties, when compared to the other retail, commercial, shopping centers that I compared in the analysis. I don't know if that answers your question.
Thank you.
Mr. Chulo, do you have any more questions of Mr. Morgan?
No, actually not. Actually, yeah, I do. So just one, I swear, just one last question, and then I will stand down. So, God, we'll go back to harmony, and I'm stuck on this word, and I don't know why I'm so stuck on it. Would this project be more harmonious if it was 50 rooms instead of 106?
I think the harmonian-ness, is that a word? Would be the same. I mean, we've all, we've all heard testimony about the zoning map, how this property is zoned commercial. The zoning ordinance only allows a certain number of properties. You know, there's, there's this many properties. We've heard bar, we've heard laundromat, we've heard, we've heard lots of them. A grocery store. This property, it's, it could be multi-use. You could have a laundromat, a grocery store, and a bar, and talk about traffic. That would really generate some traffic. But I also heard some questions or some testimony about this not being harmonious because of its use and its, you know, a hotel. But then on the, on the same, out of the same testimony, I heard, well, every house on the island's a hotel. Everything's rented VRBO, Airbnb, whatever. So I think that even drives home, it's a different type of rental unit that is harmonious with the area. I heard some testimony about building hotels on 211 or Long Beach Road. Well, those people, they drive to the beach, they park, they get out, they drive to restaurants. This property, they drive to the hotel, they walk to the beach, they walk to the restaurants. I think this would have less impact on traffic than a lot of the other uses. So if, to wrap it up and to, if the question is, is the property harmonious with the community, given the commercial zoning, given what you can do with the property, given the design, the architectural that's copied from the properties that are adjacent to it, I think the answer is certainly it is.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. I'd like to call Don Bennett up here, please. And Mr. Bennett, as you're coming up, what I want you to do is take your, your extensive traffic study and your experience and dumb it down for everyone of how you, no, I mean, I'm sorry. Well, it's technical knowledge, but what I want you to do, it's technical knowledge, but what I want you to do is sum up.
Excuse me. Respectful.
It was just a figure of speech.
It was a misspeak.
I'm not a traffic impact engineer. I look at these traffic studies, it's above what I do. So I'm asking him to take all this hyper-technical stuff, the science of it, and explain to everyone how it is that this project, the way it's designed, not only generates less traffic than any other things that could be done on this property, but explain, someone mentioned how you did your traffic studies during the off-season, and how that actually means, based on the science, that we are using a very conservative model against our project, and we're still coming in well under the traffic counts. Can you just kind of take everyone through what your traffic studies show?
The basics of a traffic study are, you take a look at the existing transportation system without the development. We determine, we determine trips generated by the development by going to statistics that tell us, the Institute for Transportation Engineers has gone out, they've studied retail sites, they've studied hotel sites, they've studied restaurant sites, they've studied laundromats, they've studied ABC stores. Numerous studies. From those studies, they count the cars coming into and leaving any particular use. They aggregate those, they analyze them, and then they find what's called an independent variable. If I plug in X, I get Y cars out of it. For some things, restaurants, it could be seats, or for some restaurants, it's square footage. For hotels, it happens to be rooms. For retail establishment, it's square footage of sales area. But they estimate the number of cars based upon what we have seen in the past at other sites. Many of these sites are suburban in nature. They depend on people using cars to get to and from them. And they're independent sites. Even if they share a similar parcel of land, people may still get in their car and drive from use to use, they just don't get on the adjacent public highway network. So we look at how cars are captured internally, how trips that, how trips and uses complement each other. As we were going through this, we follow the North Carolina Department of Transportation Standards and the Congestion Management Group Standards out of the North Carolina Department of Transportation Raleigh. We follow those standards because that's how we do traffic impact studies. Those are the rules of the game, as you were. Okay? So we go in, we generate these cars, and within whatever season we count the traffic, in this case, we made adjustments based upon the North Carolina Department of Transportation's guidance for summer versus, and it breaks it down, actually, you know, they tell you, what month did you count in? What week of that month did you count in? Okay, for this week of this month, adjust the volumes by this much. We looked at the adjacent public parking. There's a parking lot on Third Street between, I believe it's Ocean and Dolphin. We assumed that average beach, the average beach trip being about two hours, that about half of that parking lot would turn over every hour. And we added those cars into that background count to try to capture or simulate what we thought summer traffic conditions looked like on Dolphin Drive. We overlay the site's trips onto this, we calculate the appropriate reductions based upon people from the hotel, going to the retail, and then maybe going out and eating And we overlay those trips on there, and we resimulate the system, and it gives us an impact. Now, for intersections that don't exist, it's hard to quantify that impact. So we look at, well, what's the level of service with the new intersection? And invariably, most of these intersections that we studied came out as level of service A, meaning less than, well, less than about a 10-second delay. For, for the average vehicle leaving the site, or for the average vehicle turning into the site, turning onto Third Place East to get to the parking structure underneath, simulate those things, and that's how we report them. If those impacts exceed a certain threshold, if this was a DOT or another, another jurisdiction, there could be improvements mitigated, recommended. This one didn't exceed any of those thresholds.
Well, let's talk about that. First of all, when you're talking about thresholds, there's no requirement for this special use permit application for traffic study analysis that you've actually performed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, when you talk about thresholds, if a traffic impact analysis had been required, whether it's this town or any other town, what, what is, what you're looking at is, you go to the governing body and say, here's what it's going to generate, and it's below or it's above a threshold. Is that right? And what's the purpose of that?
To identify the impacts.
Because if it's above a threshold, then what happens then?
You make an improvement to get it back to where it was.
And in this case, doing a study that's not required by the town ordinances showed you what with respect to the traffic counts from this project on a worst-case scenario?
Based upon worst-case scenario of generating trips is if this were a suburban site, non-integrated, that these are three individual uses, that everything operates at level of service A or B, and with the B being about 12 seconds.
Those levels of threshold, though, the A and B, would fall below any threshold that would require modifications from this application because of traffic counts?
We generally don't see those until you goes into, I mean, the design, if DOT is designing a new facility, they design it to level of service D in the design year.
So we're well below any sort of requirement from your traffic study for this project that would even come close to generating additional considerations that would have to be taken by the applicant?
That is correct, with the worst-case trip generation even.
With the worst case. And now, when you talk about self-generating, you mean that project that's before council in this public body tonight is one that is kind of self-generating because you've got hotel patrons being able to utilize a pool, being able to utilize restaurants and retail on-site in the courtyard areas, and not getting their cars and go and congest the streets nearby because it's self-generating?
Either that, or they are an easy walking distance to the beach, the very reason people come to visit a coastal community.
Right. So people who would be staying at a hotel similar to a VRBO, this one has things on-site where they wouldn't have to necessarily get in their car, they could walk to the beach, they could ride their bike to the beach, they could walk on the nature walk behind the hotel and the establishment that's being proposed today, and not get in their cars and go up and down the streets like a normal retail establishment.
That is correct.
Like a grocery store, where you have to drive your car there, get groceries, and get back in your car, and get back on the streets for that one singular purpose.
Correct.
I don't have any further questions of Mr. Bennett. Do you have anything further you want to add, sir? Mr. Chulo, thank you.
Mr. Bennett, as I understand the, the process, the A and B category delays are computed at the hotel. Is that right?
They are computed at each one of the driveways for the hotel and at the proposed intersection of Third Place East and Dolphin.
Okay. Is there anything in your traffic impact study that takes into account adjacent intersections? And the intersection I'm referring to specifically is East Dolphin and South Middleton? Or any of the intersections along Middleton? And the impact of your trip calculations on those intersections?
And as much as the traffic study was not actually required for this site, the scope of the site was set as, let's look at what the impacts at the points of access for the hotel are.
Okay. Thank you. The North Carolina standard that was used to basically set up the parameters for the algorithm, does it take into account the idiosyncrasies of a resort community where you have much different traffic flows from one hour of the day to the next, or even one day of the week to the next, and certainly one season to the next? I know that you mentioned that there's a seasonal impact in your calculations, but my question really gets down to, we have such dramatic shifts in traffic flow on South Middleton, I question whether or not the North Carolina standards would take those variances into account.
All traffic studies in North Carolina are prepared according to the guidelines, parameters that are set forth by the Department of Transportation.
I know, and I understand that. I'm not questioning that, but I'm, I'm digging into the basis of those standards. And would those standards adequately accommodate a unique traffic situation, which I think we have on South Middleton?
I would say that the North Carolina Department of Transportation Standards take a look at all coastal towns. In fact, there are each, there are zones for those adjustment factors. So the Department of Transportation has identified some of those factors for the purposes of addressing coastal and beach towns, yes.
Unregular. Getting back to the adjacent intersection for just a final question, is there a way to expand the scope of the calculations and establish delays, I guess, for lack of a better word, for something other than the hotel itself? I don't think, I personally don't, don't have any questions with respect to the data pertaining to the hotel, but I'm, I'm more curious about the impact, if you will, the ripple effect, the cascade effect, as you move out to major intersections like the intersection of, of East Dolphin and, and South Middleton. Is there a way to, to capture and describe, quantitatively describe, those intersections?
Well, sir, I would argue that we could capture and define impacts all the way out to I-40 coming into Wilmington.
Sure, yeah.
If we wanted to expand the scope to such. But again, for a traffic impact study, we generally look at the points of access of the particular use. And in this case, we have uses that could easily generate more traffic without a traffic study.
Oh, I understand, yeah.
Understood.
Yep.
More traffic than what the proposed uses are.
Okay.
So the proposed uses have less impact than what the by-right uses.
No, I completely understand. And, and just an observation, therein lies the weakness in the traffic study. It doesn't take into account the thing that most of us are concerned about. We're not concerned about how long it's going to take you to get in and out of a hotel or a restaurant or a retail space. We're concerned about the impact of 200 additional cars at various times of the day and different days of the week on South Middleton. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett, that concern that was just last communicated by Mr. Frazier, is that any applicable standard for you in your expertise as a traffic engineer that does traffic impact analyses and studies? Under the, under the DOT guidelines for your report of the possibility of an intersection far away from the project having some idiosyncrasy? 350 feet.
Compound question?
Answer it.
Could you, could you ask me the question again, please?
Okay. Well, you've done a traffic impact analysis study that's not required under the special use permit application, correct?
Yes, sir.
Does your traffic impact analysis follow the law and the standards for generating a traffic impact analysis for a particular project?
It does.
And is there something about your traffic impact analysis that you have not put in there that would render your analysis incompatible with the standards for issuing such studies?
No, sir.
The fact, well, so what, what I'm hearing is, well, we're not concerned about the traffic going to the project and leaving the project, but that's traffic, is it not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we're on public streets where there's traffic already, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, like you said, you have, that logical extreme would be looking at impacts all the way out to I-40 or I-95 or beyond? If you carry it out to that logical extreme that Mr. Frazier was just mentioning, correct?
That is correct.
Is that the, is that the standard for a competent material and substantial traffic impact analysis that you've authored today?
To go to that extreme to define impacts, it would be outside of the standard.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions, Mr. Bennett.
Excuse me.
How many more people?
It's hard to tell.
How many more people do we have?
Well, Mr. Reed, some people, I'm not sure, they signed up on the public comment sheet, but then they wrote down hotel, or wrote down interest of STR owners, I'm not sure what that means. So, looks like we have one, possibly two, three. And then someone wrote down just why more traffic, and so, and that's not named. So possibly three.
Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll ask you, we're going on 10 o'clock. I don't know if those other three people are still here. We can probably do that roll call if you'd like, and see if other people that haven't signed up want to speak. see if other people that haven't signed up want to speak. So, if you want to discuss the mechanics of recessing this and rescheduling, or rescheduling the reconvening of this evidentiary hearing, we can.
There's a, another unexpected situation that's also occurred with a council member not feeling well.
Okay.
So, I want to take that into consideration, and perhaps the prudent thing to do here would be to recess this hearing, and in fact, the entire meeting, until a future date. But I leave that to my council members to weigh in on that.
If we're gonna, I think on both parts, we need a date certain, and we're gonna need to hear the applicant put its position on the record as well.
What order?
So, what is the pleasure of, of the board? Does the board, given what the mayor just described, want to recess this hearing and the rest of this meeting, and look at our calendars and reschedule?
I'm fine. I'm fine with that.
I think, given the hour, and given the magnitude of the issue here, because it is a significant issue, we should recess and bring everyone back fresh, and hear all the testimony that's relevant before we come to a decision. So, I would support that. And, I don't know, can the clerk give us a date certain?
We have.
Perhaps we should ask the applicant for his availability.
So, in speaking with Mr. Eads at the break, this was an issue that was raised, not about the council member not feeling well, and hopefully whoever that is, I hope you feel better. But, I would say, generally speaking, we're fine with this. However, I want to know who is remaining that hasn't testified yet or presented cross-examination, because I don't believe the record should continue to stay open beyond those people who have not yet spoke, meaning, if we're coming in next Tuesday or Wednesday, I don't want to have another 20 people sign up, and we get this evidentiary record just continues to propagate itself, because we're here tonight, we would prefer to finish the evidentiary hearing tonight, and then do a recess to a meeting where council has the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant after considering the materials further, and, and that's my only concern, I guess, is what I'm getting at.
That's a fair request.
Thank you.
And, and I do think, in that light, we need to inventory who signed up, and who may not have signed up, but that would like to provide testimony. You'd like to know that, and then, then close additional evidence to that, and questions from the board, or the applicant's response to those questions. Is that what I'm hearing from you?
What I'm saying is, I believe there's a sign-up sheet, and there's folks that have not yet answered, that were called and did not answer, and they should be foreclo, they should be precluded. Folks like Mr. Chulo, who's already testified and cross-examined, should be precluded. Anybody new that has not yet gotten up to say what they want to say, we need to know those names, and those would be the folks that, if they're still here, would have the opportunity to, at the recess meeting, to give testimony or cross-examination, but no one else. Otherwise, this could continue going on and on and on.
I think that's fair for both sides, Mayor, particularly since we are requesting that it be continued. Would council like to discuss that before we try to find another date, that concept? In other words, we had an advertised meeting tonight, people, a bunch of people showed up. If they've signed up, or they're still here, they're fair game to testify at the reconvene meeting. If not, or those that have already testified, there's no do-overs, there's no continuing on and on and on and on. And that goes with the applicant's evidence as well.
You have a conversation.
They've already, they've already closed.
Yeah.
I think I spared both sides.
So, let's do this.
Finish up the list tonight.
I think that's a sensible solution. I'm just asking the clerk if she has the definitive list, and she, she does.
I do, but I would like to call out the names if I can, because I'm not entirely sure what somebody asked for.
Let's make sure everyone's in agreement. Ms. Bell, Mr. Kraft.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Martin.
I, I would agree with clarification from council on additional instructions, why we're recessed on what is and not allowed for council members to review, talk to people, read material, converse, et cetera.
Absolutely, and, and I had intended on doing that if we were recessed it earlier, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Okay. Matthew Toretti?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Matthew Toretti?
He's not here.
T-R-O-E-T-T-I.
Applebee speaking of the skate park.
He signed up, he signed up on public hearing one, so.
All right, so that person, just so we're clear, will not be entitled to speak when we resume this.
Okay. Mariah Brazil?
She's not here.
Belinda, is it Sawyer? Nope. Okay. Joyce Griffin left, and that's it.
All right.
Wait, there's one.
I'm getting ready. Wait, please.
Wait, wait, wait.
If you, if, if, if you'll give me a second, I'm gonna clean all that up, so we're all on the same page. We're, we are here, and we want to hear from as many people that want to be heard. So, what I would do at this point, Madam Mayor, is ask all those who are here and want to be sworn in to provide testimony, who aren't on the list, to come forward and sign up.
Or who have been sworn in and aren't on the list.
Well, she called everybody, and, well, that, well, you're right, you're right, that, okay.
Okay.
If you would, come see Madam Clerk here.
And then we'll question their standing.
But, next time.
In the recess meeting.
Yes, sir.
While they're doing that, can we ask about a date to which we can recess?
Should be, well, what?
So, so, I, just looking at my phone calendar, which is 90% accurate, it's not always up to date.
Four.
I believe that February 20th is Monday.
Yes.
I believe February 20th, 21st, or the 22nd would be okay with us. The 23rd is out for Mr. Stewart, who's out of town for the next two weeks on that.
Can you check your calendar, please, for February 27th, council, if you would? That's a Monday.
Twenty, 20th.
Mr. Bach?
What days again, Mr. Richardson?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Blaylock can't be there, on the three days you mentioned.
Well, Mr. Stewart is out from February 23rd to March 7th. I suppose there would be the possibility of this week, although, the day is, day's Monday.
Yeah.
I am, I think Wednesday or Thursday, I'm in Raleigh for another matter, all day. Friday, I know I could make happen, preferably if we were to do a, a morning reconvening. But, whatever we can do to try and expedite getting another date.
I didn't hear the name that can't be here, but could they participate possibly by a video conference? No, okay. All right, so then we need to move to a March date.
About Friday afternoon?
Excuse me?
Charlie's, you're leaving when?
You do Friday afternoon?
I'm leaving Wednesday.
Yeah.
I'll be, I'll be back the 25th.
25th?
Be back when, Charlie?
25th.
You hear the 25th?
Oh, that's next Friday.
If we're looking at this Friday, what time are you thinking of that day?
Well, either, either day, Charlie's not gonna be here.
Oh, I thought, I thought Friday was, Mr. Eads was suggesting Friday, this Friday.
We were just trying to pick a date, but.
Right, we're trying to find a day that we are all.
Councilman Blaylock will be out until the 25th.
He can't zoom, but he'd be willing to try to, to.
I don't quizzid judicial either.
No, he couldn't.
He's, he's back 27th.
Back on March 7th.
I could do March 8th.
March 8th?
March 8th, council?
Goodbye, Mayor.
6:00 PM?
Well, we have a board of adjustment that morning, don't we?
Attending. So, it'll be 6:00 PM?
I have a hearing in New Hanover County on March 8th.
Thank you.
I've got a hearing on the 9th.
But could you do an evening? I know that's pressing.
I'm a church-going man. That week is ACC tournament.
Then I'm a church-going man myself.
I'll be in Greensboro on the 7th, that week.
Week of the 13th.
We'll have a council meeting the 14th.
Yes, we do.
I mean, we're gonna have other public hearings.
Yeah. How about the 13th, Monday, the 13th?
Goodbye, me.
Goodbye, me.
Charlie? Mark?
Mr. Kelly?
The 13th, 6:00 PM. It's two meetings in a row.
What else we got going on?
And how about the applicants? Are y'all available the 13th, the evening of the 13th?
It says I'm in a trial that week, but I'm familiar with that case, and I believe it will not go forward. So, I would say, yes, I can be there on the 13th.
Thank you. And your, your colleagues?
13th, Monday, 6. Rob, are you?
Is the idea that we're gonna?
Would you be available on March 13th?
I, I understand this is an imposition for everyone, but.
Mr. Kirkland?
This is too important.
I'd like to start earlier.
Me too.
Well, if you're, if people are available to start earlier, I'm, I'm available. Mr. Martin?
You're still on March 13th?
March 13th, how early could you meet?
Are you referring to sometime in the morning, or in the afternoon?
I think afternoon. But you tell me when, I know the two people at work.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's right, you've got a case.
Well, I don't think the case is gonna go to trial. However.
Go ahead.
Three of my members of this group, they can do the 15th. Everybody could do the 15th.
So, we would have to, correct me if I'm wrong, but we would have to continue this hearing separately from continuing the meeting, the agenda for the meeting itself?
We would do both. We would recess.
So, they don't have to, they don't have to be sequential?
He's, no, you're on the 15th.
I can't do the 15th.
Can't do the 15th.
Why don't they send us a date, and we'll send them a date?
But if we recess it, we have to recess to a specific date and time, do we not?
What was wrong with the 8?
I think so.
What was wrong with the 8?
Mr. Richardson, remind me the 8th, 9th, and 10th, what those dates.
ACC tournament.
Oh, the ACC tournament.
Just want to push it back.
One of our council members won't be in town.
No, we're gonna get you out here. There's still three more people?
Okay, but we've got two council members at work, so.
I can, I work for my brother, I can do whatever needs to be done.
I'm just trying to get you out of here.
Okay, you're doing a fine job.
Mr. Richardson, do you have anything to offer?
They're only available 15th, all of them.
Dates and times that you?
March 16th.
Council, March 16th. No, Mr. Martin's not here.
I, I could be back on the 29th. I could cut it short.
I'll leave out on the 23rd.
Another cruise?
I didn't know we all had life.
March 20th is on the table.
That's a Monday, right? You can't do it this Friday because Mr. Blaylock?
Mr. Blaylock will be gone.
I would love to do this Friday, but Charlie's leaving. He flies out the 15th.
Yeah, can't do that to him.
Like, two days from now, Wednesday? There's no way I'm clear, man.
Sheila, I think an earlier start would be better, if you can get off work. 10 or 1.
It doesn't have to be at night, right?
No.
Okay.
I think we're good with March 20th. I've got something that could put a fly in your window, but I'll just, I'll make it happen.
Okay.
It's a, it's a property tax appeal of all things, if you're wrong. And they give us three dates, so, and that's one of the three.
Okay.
I'm good, March 20th.
4 o'clock on the 20th, going once. Mr. Richardson, 4 o'clock on the 20th? So, we're gonna recess the entire meeting till then?
That motion's on, on the floor, but I believe Councilman Martin asked council for instructions from.
Sure.
Yes.
I, I, that's why I want to do it in two motions.
Can I also get a roll call of the five witnesses that just signed up that would be part of the recessed meeting?
We have Tom Lowe, Steve Kennington, Kenningford, Bianca Hazel, Wojciech Sabinski, I got that right? Okay. And Edward Lovett.
May I just make sure, Tom, Tom Lowe, Steve Kennington, Bianca Hazel?
Basil.
Basil. Edward Lovett, and the, the last one was Sobczynski, or?
Wojciech Sabinski.
Sorry.
I'll, I'll spell it for you. W O, I say that.
That's not next Monday.
Spell the last name for you.
You can do that, but, but I'm thinking, if you want to start at 4, because we have the rest of this meeting to get through, we could just try to get through the rest of this meeting, beginning at 4, and then suspend the rules, pull this in at 6. Or, or, you know, take the business in a way to where we'd be ready to go at 6 for the continuation of this hearing.
So, would we do all of the public hearings at 6, and do the regular meeting at 4? What are we, can you clarify, please?
I, I would say, well, first, we deal with this one, because we've opened this one.
Correct.
Then I say we continue, a second motion would be to continue. Then I say we continue, a second motion would be to continue the remainder of this meeting.
Including the other public hearings, 2 and 3, okay.
Which I just wanted to note, the other applicant for the other special use permit is here, and we've been consulting with him about the dates as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, so, before, I, I'm gonna request a motion to recess this hearing to reconvene on March 20th at 6:00 PM?
At 6:00 PM.
Yeah.
Well.
Okay, but that's fine, we'll do 4:00.
Okay. The, the request was people that wanted to be here, they.
The people that have signed up?
We, we have another gentleman who wants to add his name to the list to speak.
Okay. And get his name and tell Mr. Richardson his name, please.
So, we need a start time that we all can agree with.
6 o'clock, okay.
Is there anything else at 6 o'clock for, resume this?
6 o'clock for this one, for them.
This one that'll start at 6:00, but we're gonna do, we're gonna meet at 4 o'clock, do the rest of the meeting, tonight's meeting. And at 6 o'clock, or whenever we finish the other meeting, we'll do the special hearing we started tonight. Make sense?
It does, it makes things complicated, but we'll, we'll deal with it, so the motion, are you looking for a motion, counselor?
I, I am, I want to do two things, a housekeeping first, I would like for Ms. Stikes to identify this gentleman, so Grady can put that on his list.
Appreciate everyone's patience, it's been a long night, but this is an important issue for everyone. Mr. Eads?
Pretend, and, and Mayor, I want to remind everybody, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. Since we are four hours and 16 minutes, give or take, deep into it, there's been a lot of testimony and evidence. I, I hope members of the public that are watching this will not attempt to contact the council with additional evidence. If they do, I ask you to delete it immediately, or better yet, don't read it, forward it to the town manager. And the, the reason for that is, we can only consider the evidence that's adduced during this hearing and then the re-continuation of the hearing. You can't talk about it amongst yourselves, you can't talk about it with your constituents, and that's not Brian Eads' rules, that's not Mr. Richardson's rules, wherever he is, that's, that's the state of North Carolina's rules. And any applicant that was up here would want the same thing, they would want to know exactly when your deliberations start, they would want to hear it, it's an open, transparent process. So, admonish you to refrain from engaging in discussions, refrain from looking at any evidence that wasn't introduced tonight, which is Exhibits 1 through 10, that Madam Clerk will likely have available at some point in the near future, or for your review. Do you have any questions to me before I suggest a motion? I suggest we make a motion to recess this evidentiary hearing.
Nope.
No.
No. They'd pee in their weevies.
A motion to recess this evidentiary hearing to be resumed at 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM on March 20th, 2023. Mr. Richardson, I'll give you an opportunity to quickly add anything to, to my admonition and my proposed motion.
Nothing to add.
Thank you. The, the first motion would be to recess this evidentiary hearing to re-convene on March 20th at 6:00 PM.
Let's get that out of the way, Mr. Buck?
So, moved, yes, that's fine, that's clear.
All in favor? Thank you, second motion, Mr. Buck, Eads?
To recess, to recess the February 13th, 2023, regular scheduled meeting of the Town of Oak Island Town Council to March 20th, to begin at 4 o'clock PM.
All in favor?
Well, I was just double-checking that there wasn't something that preceded what we're getting ready to do, I mean, we gotta keep these things in order.
That's, well, that's what I was asking earlier, all right, so is that all in favor, was it yes, unanimous? Thank you very much.
And I just want to thank the applicant and all those who provided testimony tonight for the decorum, we had a very large crowd, and hopefully, when we resume, we'll continue that type of decorum.
Do the, I mean, consider the meeting recessed, do I have a motion to adjourn, well?
No.
Sorry, so the items that we had on the consent agenda?
Yes.
The contracts? It's on the consent agenda?
Mr. Eads, can they take the Exhibits home with them?
What's that?
Copies of the Exhibits home with them?
Need to take this or leave it, counselor?
You can, you can, but just don't let, keep them secure. He says just gonna delay all the projects, so we'll just.
I don't know how it can be helped.
Don't go anywhere, Mr. Buck.
We, we had on the consent agenda. We'd have to suspend the rules, move the agenda around, I mean.
I've already stopped recording, so.
Where?
I'm already off record.
So, we've adjourned?
You've, you've recessed.
We've recessed.
Okay. Thank you all very much.